Good evening, everyone. Welcome to a meeting of the 100 and Central Regional High School Board of Education. Please be advised that this and all meetings of the board are open to the public and media, consistent with the Open Public Meetings Act and JSA 10:4-6, and that advance notice required therein has been provided. Meeting notice was also posted in the boardroom of the upper school campus, sent to the Courier News, Star Ledger, Express Times, and the Hunterdon County Democrat, and sent to the Clerks of Delaware Township, East Danwell Township, Flemington Borough, Raritan Township, and Reddington Township. The public will have an opportunity to be heard, as shown on the agenda. May I have a roll call, please?
Mrs. Bloodfield, Dr. Charney.
Here.
Mr. Davidson.
Here.
Mr. Fowler.
Here.
Mrs. Kellogg.
Mr. Nickel.
Here.
Mrs. O'Donnell.
Mr. Richard.
Here.
And Mrs. Hughes.
Here. Can everyone please rise for the flag salute?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Dr. Charney, would you be so kind as to read our district mission statement?
Pleasure. Hunterdon Central is an innovative educational community dedicated to the intellectual, social, and emotional safety and growth of all students. While fostering curiosity and promoting wellness, we aspire to create powerful learning experiences, establish strong partnerships, and serve as contributing members of society.
Thank you. Can I have a motion for approval of the November 19 minutes?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, can I have a roll call vote, please?
Dr. Charney.
Yes.
Mr. Davidson.
Yes.
Mr. Fowler.
Yes.
Mrs. Kellogg.
Yes.
Mr. Nickel.
Yes.
Mr. Richard.
Yes.
And Mrs. Hughes.
Yes.
All yes motion carries.
Thank you. We have a number of correspondents, all of which are noted on the agenda, and with that, we will move right into the superintendent's report.
Thank you. Thank you, Mrs. Hughes. Thank you, everybody. Tonight, as we think about break and the new year and everything in front of us, we're looking back on everything from the fall and feeling grateful, really grateful tonight, also really proud. And educators can be a humble bunch, so that's not a familiar feeling for educators all the time, but we're proud of all that we have to share tonight in celebration of our students and staff, and really thankful for all of the people around them who make their incredible work possible. So I have the fortune every day of spending my time with an enormous number of not just humble, but extremely passionate, extremely dedicated, extremely compassionate folks who work day in and day out to bring us this moment tonight where we can be proud. So I'm going to turn it over first to Mr. Brant, wherever he is out there, there he is, to get us started this evening with just celebrating all the good work that everyone's been doing.
Thank you, Dr. Moore. Again, yes, my name is Ed Brant, principal here at Hunterdon Central. And to kick off some of these celebrations and recognitions for students and staff here, I'm going to lead off by one of them, which is every year, the Governor Educator of the Year Award process recognizes two staff members from each school throughout the state of New Jersey, and that is the Educational Services Professional and also the Education Teacher of the Year. So we have two awards. So tonight, we're going to recognize both of our award winners. Our first is the Educational Services Professional. So if I can have our 10th grade nurse, Ms. Kathy Stenger, up here. So Kathy here is one of our school nurses. She has been a key part of the team of health professionals who have helped the school in so many ways over the past few years during the COVID health issues. Kathy has always been on top of her game, incorporating new practices and guidelines into her work, helping students navigate through various health situations. She has a very special energy like no other, not to mention a measurable amount of genuine compassion that she shares every day with students and staff. Kathy has been on the forefront of current techniques in assisting our adolescents through many of the physical and mental health issues that are present today, and she shares the information with her peers and the counseling and administration teams as well. She's been an incredible, incredible resource for all of us. And as one of her peers stated, Kathy may not be wearing a cape, but she is a true hero and a gift to our Hunterdon Central family. So Kathy, congratulations. I'm going to switch over to another award in a second, and we'll be back in a little bit while somebody else parks. All right, so we have a staff and student All-Star process here as well. As part of that, of our programs to support and recognize positive influences and contributions to our school community, we have a staff and student All-Star nomination and selection process that is run by students. Students and staff members are able to nominate staff members, while staff members are able to nominate students through a workflow on their Aspen. Throughout the year, a committee of students facilitated by Mr. Estrada, our vice principal for the class of 2023, that committee combs through the nominations and votes on the winning selections. Tonight, we have a number of staff and student All-Stars from our first quarter of the 22-23 school year. So I'm going to call up, and I wasn't able to get everybody checked in, but I'm going to call all the names up, any of the All-Stars come on up, students and staff, maybe line up along the front here. We have, I think I saw Cindy Fork is one of our staff All-Stars. Come on up. I know you guys are out there. In our student list, Dee Dee Feldvari, Claire, we have Claire Williams, Alexander Carpe, Angelina Mack, Daniel Trapp, Rosa Vargas Anaya, Maria Garcia Martinez, Aaron Kabai Toks, Pedro Mendoza Guerra, Carlos Hernandez Cruz, Mel Hunter, and Lindsay Lorenz. Again, and it is, I think, a great honor too and a tribute to you guys realizing that your student peers are the ones who nominated and picked you out. So congratulations, and again, thank you for setting a great tone for all the rest of us here as well. Thank you. [applause] Mr. Brant? Mr. Brant? Come turn around. Turn around, guys. You want to turn and face the board members there? All right, we're good. All right, you guys are good. Thank you, guys. One other group we have here, and before I wrap up my part, HCTV. We have a tremendous number of student technicians, and we have a couple here tonight. The staff at HCTV, our Hunterdon Central Television, train students to work on TV as TV professionals on a wide variety of television productions. We currently have approximately 25 student techs working as technical directors, camera operators, and play-by-play announcers. In the first 15 weeks of this year, they've worked on 32 live television broadcasts for a total viewership of over 32,000. We'd like to congratulate and acknowledge our student techs here tonight for their outstanding work they do for Hunterdon Central's YouTube channel and also Comcast Channel 27, and I believe we have Bryce Cohen and Jenna Costellano, if you guys want to come down. Congratulations. All right, give a little, give it a little. Thanks, congratulations. All right, and for the last recognition I have, is back to the Governor Educator of the Year Awards, our Teacher of the Year, Mr. Scott Sacks. So here's just, here's just a segment of his nomination. Scott truly embodies the meaning of educator. He is multifaceted, he is multifaceted in his abilities in and out of the classroom. He pours his heart and soul into helping his students learn in so many different ways. In the classroom, Scott has experience teaching multiple levels Spanish language, from courses designed for native speaking Spanish speakers and up to AP Spanish. Scott has the ability to adapt himself and his lesson designs for any level of need. He enjoys sharing his knowledge and his passion with his students. He works tirelessly to promote a love and passion for world languages. He advises and mentors students as they earn their certificates of bilingual literacy, advises them as the faculty advisor for the Spanish Honor Society. He is the Spanish Honor Society State Director of New Jersey, and is a Regional One Director for the American Association of Teachers of Spanish and Portuguese. And in his spare time, and as you'll see later on, he continues work to give back to the community through service. He runs the Red Cross Club here at Hunterdon Central and helps students organize and run blood drives at the school. I think we have one January 5 coming up. He works as a class advisor, organizing large events such as field trips and the prom, just to provide students the opportunity to enjoy themselves here at Hunterdon Central. So congratulations, Scott. That concludes my portion. I'm going to pass it on now to Mr. Scott Cohen, who's our Dean of Students.
Good evening, Board of Ed and members of the community. Scott Cohen, Dean of Students, and tonight I have the pleasure of recognizing a number of student clubs and organizations here at Central that have already, within the short timeframe we've been here, done some amazing accomplishments. So for the community and for the board to know, we are a very active student club and activity organization-based, student-centered school. We have over 100 clubs that are crossing over community service, professional growth and development. We have performing arts, we have affinity groups, we have something for everybody, and we still continue to pledge our commitment by offering new clubs as students come forward with their ideas. So the first club I'd like to recognize tonight is a club that has been around at Central since 1960. For 62 years, the Red Cross Club has been present here at Hunterdon Central, and you just heard the award presented to Mr. Scott Sacks for his dedication as not only a faculty member, but a true advisor to our students here at Central. So I would ask that the students come forward to the front of the stage area, please. So tonight, just so you know a little bit about the Red Cross Club, they participate in service projects in the community, region, nation, and around the world. This club works closely with the American Red Cross of Central New Jersey. They participate in service projects to raise relief for current issues as well as saving for services that may be needed in the future. Current projects they organize are their annual clothing drive, the blood drive that you just heard about coming up in January, as well as donations collected throughout the year. Tonight, though, they have a very recognizable recognition and distinction in that they have received the award for the top 10 Red Cross Clubs in the state of New Jersey. So I congratulate them. And I'll now turn it over to their advisor, Mr. Sacks, to introduce those members who are here.
Again, thank you to these guys for such an awesome award to be nominated, one of the top 10 Red Cross Clubs in New Jersey. And I think one of the things that you wanted to ask, how long I've been advisor of the club as well, and that's been since 2006, when I first started this. So I present to you Lauren Easley, one of our officers, Lindsay Lorenz, Elena Lu, Jason Pye, Adelaide Trejo, and one of our officers, Bella Williams. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. If you want to turn around, be recognized by the board as well. Thank you very much. And you can, there's also an exit up on the top left if you wish to. The second club I would like to recognize tonight is a club that's been around at Central since 1958 for 64 years, and that's the Speech and Debate Club. So if the Speech and Debate Club members can come on around, it's a big crew, so we'll have to probably use multiple tiers and areas for the students to come in. As they're coming in, I will inform you that their advisor, Mr. Adam Leonard, has taught at Hunterdon Central in the Social Studies Department for the last 16 years and has led this team for the last 15 years. His record is astounding. The Speech and Debate provides students with the opportunity to engage in serious discussion and debate with other students on the team as well as individuals from other schools that attend the competitions hosted by the New Jersey Forensic League. Students can compete in two debate categories, public forum and Lincoln Douglas, and a number of speech categories including declamation, improvisational acting, impromptu speaking, dramatic interpretation, humorous interpretation, extrepania speaking, duo interpretation, prose reading, and the like. The team travels to several competitions held throughout the state beginning in November, so they just kicked up the year, and culminating with the state tournament held in March. Meeting time is used to demonstrate speaking and debating techniques, review feedback from judges, and allow members to practice their performances and hone their skills as a speaker and/or debater. Tonight, they are being recognized for an award for being the top 20% of schools in the nation, in the nation. The team earns its recognition by being part of the National Speech and Debate Association, which awards points based on student performance, the number of degrees earned in their National Forensics League Honor Society, which our students belong to, and the size of our program, the number of students involved. And you can see, they're not even all here, but you can just see the large number of students engaged in this wonderful club. In addition, there have been numerous students in this club that have been recognized for their individual awards, first, second, nominating all different levels across the board. So without further ado, I'm just going to turn it over to Mr. Leonard for a quick introduction to some of the fine students as part of his club.
Thank you, Mr. Cohen, and good evening, members of the board. We tried not to overwhelm you tonight. We have nearly 100 members of the Speech and Debate Team, so we just brought a few tonight. I was asked to recognize just a few members, so I selected one of our up-and-coming stars. So I want to first draw attention to Shelby Manning, who's placed first and received some other awards in congressional debate.
Raise your hand. Shelby, raise your hand. Shelby, raise, raise your hand, Shelby.
Shelby's hiding in the corner. All right, I also wanted to draw attention to Amvi Tripathi, who's right here in the front, a couple steps down, congressional debater. So Amvi has competed at a number of local and national circuit tournaments, including the Princeton Classic most recently, where she was a semifinalist, so congratulations to her. And standing right next to her is one of our team presidents, Parine Arya, so congratulations to him. Parine's been a finalist in a number of local and state and national tournaments as well, so congratulations, Parine. And we could continue on, but we'll, we'll stop it there. Thank you.
All right, if you want to turn around, just say hello to the board members. And then you can head out the side door. Thank you very much. Next, I would like to recognize four students from, that belong to our choir. So if, Ms. Colton, are you here?
Okay.
Come on down. Ms. Colton and Ms. Petrician have been working with these students in the Vocal Music Department for some time. The Vocal Music Department has three curricular and three co-curricular choirs. All students in a choir are eligible to audition for the CGME Honors Club. Over 400 students from all over Central New Jersey audition for the Mixed and Treble Choir. The students are responsible for working on audition material themselves, and Megan and Hillary then work with the students individually to ensure their preparedness. This year, Hunterdon Central Regional High School had four students selected for this honor to the Central New Jersey Region Honors Choir, and three of them are with us this The students are responsible for working on audition material themselves, and Megan and Hillary then work with the students individually to ensure their preparedness. These students will perform with the CGME Treble Choir on January 29th, so there's an opportunity coming up to see them do their magic. Hillary and Megan have had over 500 students sing with region choir and all-state choir, all-eastern choir, and all-national choir so far. I'll now turn it over to Ms. Colton to introduce our wonderful students.
So we have three seniors, Haley Ader, Bella Hopkins, and Leah Shala, who is not here, and we're so happy that we have a freshman, Adriana Lopikalow.
Thank you very much. The last club and activity that we will be acknowledging and recognizing tonight is our 11 and 12 play. I'd ask all those students to again come in, it's also a large crowd, so if you can scatter maybe in the front and up at the top, that would be great. Directed and led by Ms. Gail Enterline, this 11-12 play for this November was Oscar Wilde's "The Importance of Being Earnest." I hope some of you came out and got to see the fantastic production, but the production alone is the production. The behind-the-scenes work is where a lot of the magic takes place. So in conjunction with the stars of the play, we have the stars behind the scenes as well. So our stage crew is here as well. So before we move on, I would like to just let you know that each of you will be receiving accommodation from Assemblyman Freiman, who happens to be a fan of plays, and he wrote to each of you, dear and your name, "Lights, camera, action. I would like to offer you my sincerest congratulations on the success of 'The Importance of Being Earnest.' Your dedication and commitment to the cast and crew are an inspiration to all of us, and I could not be prouder of you. Excellence isn't a skill, it's an attitude. Keep up your good work and continue to strive for perfection. I see a star on the Hollywood Walk of Fame in your future." Assemblyman Freiman. So I will be presenting this to you after the session, so congratulations. And now I'll turn it over to Ms. Enterline, Mr. Klein, and Ms. O'Connor. Mr. Klein was the technical advisor, and Ms. O'Connor was the set designer and construction advisor. So if you're both here, if you could come, oh, you're right behind me, perfect. Excellent. There you go.
Hi. I'm going to be reading for Mr. Klein also, who's busy back there. All right. So first, I'd like to recognize the students that are here. Blakely Niva. Sammy Rimza. Casey Schengrand. Reina Schroff. And Everett Simons. And then for all who are tuning in via livestream, Callie Aversano. Ryan Beistow. Grayson Beal Selvich. Mackenzie Bender. Piper Berkowitz. Nicole Briggs. Molly Briggs. Alexandria Buck. Charlotte Bein. Amelia Cannon. Riley Dosh. Joseph Duffy. Sarah Feldman. Anastasia Feldman. Kayla Finelli. Olivia Fuadhi. Yasim Gokmen. Ryan Hampel. Lou Herbert. Emily Polito. Ryan Jean Mirzjuski. Aaron Kabai Toks. Sorry, guys, we've got a lot of crew. Emma Kogut. Allison Kuzmies. Andrew Labardo. Cam Metalista. Connor McAlion. Maximilian Niedzjko. Kaitlin Osborne. Jack Ritter. Leah Faith Rosa. Ben Rogers. Chloe Sahulka. Isabella Sahulka. Sana Saxina. Shria Shaw. Colton Schief. Sofia Siniskalsko. Autumn Sereninger. Kiera Spring. Madeline Hurvey. Amelia Watson. Julia White. And James Wagon.
That was, that was just the 11th graders, right? You got the 12th graders now there?
Those were all the stage crew.
That was the stage crew. And this, when they changed the set every night, they got applause because the set changes were spectacular and very fast. All right, I'm Gail Enterline, I directed the 11-12 play, so I have some of the cast here. It's a very small cast, very big crew. So I want to thank and honor Nick Coco. Haley Ader. Max Keller. Molly McGee. Quinn Mazio. Ian McLaughlin. Emily Osborne. Kendall Plumstead. Duncan Schengrand. Marlon Velez. Marlon Velez, and our student directors, Jenna Castellano and Anya Finn. Thank you very much.
One more time for the cast and crew. So thank you for your time and patience with that. But as you can see with many of our clubs, we have lots of active, engaged students, really contributing powerful stuff to our student body and to the community. So we applaud all of them. At this time, I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Jesse Spencer for athletics, our supervisor of athletics. Jesse Spencer? Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Hi, thank you very much. Yes, my name is Jesse Spencer. I am the athletic director here at Hundred and Central, and I appreciate you allowing us to steal a few minutes to recognize some of the accomplishments that we've had this fall. We had an unbelievable fall season. We took home the Hundred and Warren Sussex Championships in boy soccer, girl soccer, girls tennis, and girls cross-country. And we were the Skyland Conference champions in gymnastics. So it's been an unbelievable fall. Divisional champions for girls volleyball. Delaware Divisional Girls Champion. So we also, for this time, I thought it was important that maybe we recognize some of our individual accomplishments as well. So the first team that I would like to call up is our Boys Cross Country Team, who's with us tonight. And I appreciate the individuals that were able to make it, and I just want to take a moment to recognize some of them. So our Boys Cross Country Team was second at the Hundred and Warren Sussex Championships. They were second in the Skyland Conference Championship Meet, and they were third in the State Sectional Meet. So first of all, congratulations to you. Just want to step forward as I call your name. Noah Smith and Nate Moore were our first-team All-Skyland Conference, first-team All-Conference. And our second team is Brendan Blythe and Will Weinland. So once again, just congratulations to our Boys Cross Country Team and the individual accomplishments. Thanks. The next team that was able to be with us tonight is our Girls Field Hockey Team. So have them come down. And they had an unbelievable year. And sometimes, you know, what I love about sports is that sometimes the reflection of the scoreboard or the reflection of the outcome of a season doesn't always tell the story. And I thought that, you know, our field hockey team this year, how they came together and the camaraderie that they possessed throughout the course of the year, and how they just came up and showed up and participated, and the effort that they put in on a daily basis was just an outstanding accomplishment and the relationships that they were able to build with one another. And they just had an outstanding year as a team, and I can't congratulate them enough. Today, I'd like to first recognize our first-team All-Conference is Maria Epolito. And she was also selected as the All-North Jersey Field Hockey Coaches Association All-Star and will be attending a banquet in January. And Victoria Stefanic, who is our second-team All-Conference, and an outstanding leader in our school and on our team. So congratulations to you and congratulations on a fine year. Good job. Next team that was able to join us today is our two individuals from our football team. So I'll just call them down. And once again, I thought our football season, we had an outstanding year. The way that we competed and the way that, you know, how, you know, sometimes in sports, it's just, and in football, they say it all the time, it's a game of inches. And, you know, this year, we had several games of inches in one play from here and one play the other way. And a lot of things would have, you know, come together, you know, at the end of those games. But at the end of the day, you know, the way that these kids show up and the way that their effort that they put in on a daily basis, and to our coaching staff that, you know, just embodies and embraces this team and how they just went about it every day. It was really awesome to see, and I can't congratulate them enough either. But the conference is our, the big central football conference that we are a part of. And first, Trevor Fish was selected as our first-team All-Conference. And Chris Brinkowski was also selected as our first-team All-Conference Defensive Lineman. So I appreciate you guys showing up and being a part, and congratulations on not only tonight, but a great career here at Central. And our next team I'd like to recognize is our gymnastics team. I'd like to have her come down. And once again, our gymnastics team was, had an outstanding year. They had a great year. They were the Skyland Conference Champions. And in Skyland gymnastics, we don't have a Hundred and Warren. We only have a Skyland. So, because there's not as many teams in the Hundred and Warren. But so we do a Skyland Conference Championship Meet, and we took home the gold in that, which was an outstanding year. And the first time, I believe 2012, we were able to qualify as a team to the NJSEA State Championship Meet, which we took home the fifth place in the All-Around Gymnastics Championship. So that was an unbelievable year they had. And Ava Suffin has joined us tonight, and she is our first-team All-Skyland Conference. And she is also the first-team All-State on the bars. And we look forward, she is going to have an outstanding career here. And she's an unbelievable, had an unbelievable year, and I can't congratulate you enough on your accomplishments. And next, our boy soccer team. And once, once again, our boy soccer team, Hundred and Warren Sussex Tournament Champions. And they were the second in the sectional states. Took a tough one to Westfield in overtime. But they had an outstanding year. And they just, the way that they played was unbelievable. I mean, watching the World Cup this past Sunday and just watching how our kids play, I mean, how they did it and how they go about it was just outstanding. And they had an unbelievable, an unbelievable year. And joining us today, first-team All-Conference, Calvin Artemidj, who's also our goalie. And Francisco Perez, second-team All-Conference. And again, two young men that are going to have an outstanding career here, and I can't wait to see what's in store next year. So congratulations to you guys. And last, our girls volleyball team. And Kevin, you can come up too. And once again, our girls volleyball team had an outstanding year as well. They were the divisional champions in the Skylands. And they were 21 and 7, 13 and 1 overall in the Skyland Conference, which was an outstanding year. And, you know, they took us all the way to the sectional finals, and we took a tough one to Old Bridge, but it was an outstanding year that they had. And once again, just the camaraderie on this team and the relationships that they had. And I just, they had an outstanding year, and congratulations to them. And joining us this evening was Lindsay Lorenz, who was selected as one of our first-team All-Conference. And congratulations to you and your team and to our coach who joined us tonight, Kevin Jones. Thank you very much. So once again, thank you very much for the ability, and thank you for allowing us to take some time to do this. And I will now pass it on to Ms. Jessica Cangialossee Hayde. Oh.
Good evening, everybody. Thank you for having us. I know this is quite the evening. I know it's taking some time, but I think that's tribute and testament to all that we have to celebrate here at Central. So I'm here with some academic awards. And first, I wanted to honor some of our staff members. If you would come forward. We have Mr. Chris Bellotti, Ms. Emily Elman Shaw, and Dr. Lindsay Warren. Okay. These three, along with Ms. Nicole Ulbridge, just presented two weeks ago at the National Social Studies Conference in Philadelphia, which is quite the honor. So I'm going to read to you just a blurb about what each team presented at the conference. So Ms. Ulbridge and Mr. Bellotti were part of a psychology presentation. The Rutgers Camden Psychology Department and the New Jersey Council for Social Studies co-hosted a workshop entitled "Time to Reconnect: Addressing Issues and Concerns in the Psychology Classroom 2022 and Beyond." Chris and Nicole were the only high school teachers asked to present at this particular part of the conference, specifically on the same docket as the president of the American Psychological Association. They were asked to present their Psychology of Wellness class, which I believe we presented here at the board meeting just a few years ago. They share curricular work and the need for this type of class for high school students. The audience consisted of teachers from various states nationwide, and they presented alongside the president of the APA and college professors from Rutgers and Drexel. Thank you, Chris and Nicole. No, you can say. We're going to take a picture. We have Ms. Elman Shaw and Dr. Warren, and they presented in the social studies portion of the conference. Their session was entitled "The Role of Recalibrating Historical Analysis." They are analyzing historical documents and the takes on new dimensions. When students utilize an identity wheel to consider multiple categories and intersections of identity and apply those insights to their document-based analysis. Over 30 educators from across the country visited the session and engaged in wonderful conversations. And I will also add, they have done this presentation countywide as well. They in fact did part of it for me for one of our curriculum presentations. So congratulations to you two as well. So do you want to stand for a picture? Think we're doing, are we doing a picture? Thank you, Dr. Webb. And Mrs. Bellotti.
Jess, turn around.
Oh, okay. I can come in, yeah. Thank you, thank you. Okay, next, we're going to ask Emily Ivanouskas to come up. Emily, could you come on up? Emily, that's, yeah, we could clap for her twice. That's good. Emily is a student in our Honors Imaginative Process course, and she published a poem in a national digital magazine for teens called Teen Inc., and her poetry is called "Period, Comma." If you Google it, you can read it. And I'm trying to entice you to do that because not only is Emily's poetry amazing, but there's many amazing things in there. And I think that people are not even aware of this wonderful resource that's made by teens 14. So congratulations to you, Emily. Do you want to stand for a picture? Thank you, Emily. You can come this way. And next, I'll call up Tatiana Chlinka. Tatiana just completed an independent study, and it was a research exhibit and government internship that she did over the summer for the State Parks and Historical Society. She brought together her love of environmental science and history, and she developed an exhibit for the state parks. And the feature, the exhibit featured a trip to the past, and there was information about beekeeping, comparing different sites and how bees' artifacts will be shown. She did an interactive experience on beekeeping, honey tasting as well, which sounds pretty cool. She also then brought in the history, talking about colonial candle making and how they used bees for that. And then she also invited guest speakers and was able to retrieve guest speakers for the exhibit. So congratulations to you, Tatiana. It was quite a presentation. Thank you. Great job. Okay, next, we have a larger group. So this is our TV2 and Journalism students from last year. If everyone could hold their applause, I'm going to read all their names while they walk down. If you all wouldn't mind beginning the walk down. Thank you, hon. So we have Samuel Adams Fancera. We have Dahlia Alvarez. We have Callan Armitage. We have Jenna Castellano, Julia Serny, Anthony DeLuca, Ian Hoats, A.J. Landy, Nicholas Guerra, Slater Laurison, Andrew Mack, and Annabelle Turvey. So I'm just going to clap for them first, and then I'll read you a little bit. So last year, these students, the TV2 course and the Journalism course, combined forces to create a video news story. And they entered the Garden State Scholastic Press Association 2022 News Contest. And they actually won first place. Congratulations to you all for broadcast news. And their feature was called "Central's Comeback from COVID." It's actually on our website, on The Lamp Online, if you want to check it out. It's a wonderful news piece. A lot of hard work went into it, a lot of interviewing, a lot of storytelling. So congratulations to you all, and thank you very much. You can go this way. Okay, and that is the end of the awards for academics. And we are going, well, actually, we're going to continue with academics, the intersection of academics and counseling. And I'm going to call on Dr. Danielle Zurwicky, our supervisor of counseling.
Letting the transition happen. Okay. So thank you very much. So I have the privilege of first introducing our students, who are the 2023 National Merit Scholarship Commended Students. So if you don't know about this, these students took the PSAT last year in their junior year, and they were able to qualify, to see if they could qualify for the National Merit Scholarship. New Jersey is the hardest state in the country for students to get this recognition. So I'm going to call them down. We have Isabella Chen, Caitlin Fiore, Julia Rubello, and Nate Wright. Thank you. So these commended students are recognized for their exceptional academic promise as demonstrated by their outstanding performance on the National Merit Scholarship Qualifying Test. Congratulations. Sorry, one of them is in both. Okay. So the next one is for the AP Capstone Diploma. So I'm just going to read the description for those of you who know what an AP is or have ever taken one. These students earn scores of three or higher in AP Seminar, AP Research, and on four additional AP exams of their choosing. So this is a tremendous honor. So we have Caitlin Fiore and Advica Patanke. Congratulations. And this concludes our student recognition event of the night. Thank you.
All right, all right. We have a few more things, business items. I know some people are sort of shifting a little bit. A few more business items to take care of tonight, and then... And then we have to hear from a couple of our folks about some of our academic departments as well. Thank you all for your patience, but lots of great stuff tonight. That was a little overwhelming, but fantastic.
Can I just say I could sit here all night and listen to the student and staff accomplishments? So it's awesome. Great job.
Yeah, fantastic. And I have to mention tonight, too, I want to call out Mr. Scott Sax and Mr. Kathy Stenger as our Teacher of the Year and Education Service Professional of the Year as well. Most important sign that you have the right choice there is when they are surprised. You know, and you barge in on them, and you go into their classroom, or in Kathy's case, her office, and they are just speechless and surprised because they're just going about their work. They're going about their work as if nothing is going on. And just to receive that kind of, or rather, to give that kind of recognition was an important part of our day that day. I also want to say, I think we brightened Mrs. Stenger's day in particular. She had had a bad morning that morning, though not as bad a morning as the deer out on 5/13 that she and her car made acquaintance with that morning. But, and all of her talents and skills as a nurse, unfortunate for the deer, though. But fantastic. And I want to thank Mrs. Hughes and Mrs. Bluffield, who's not with us tonight, for working with the committee that had to make a lot of difficult decisions out of really a talented field of nominees there to land on these two individuals. I also want to thank with deepest gratitude Mr. Richard, Mr. Nickel, and Dr. Charney for their service on the board over the past several years and their service to our students and their families and to our staff. Most important thing that a superintendent, I think, can say about a board member is that a board member has made our work better. And you three gentlemen have certainly made our work better through your service and didn't ask for anything in return for it. And so I honor you tonight and hope that you remember your time here as a time in which you contributed and had a massive impact for our students there. Yes.
Dr. Moore, can I just say a few words?
Yes, yeah.
So I just want to say a few words on behalf of the board to Rob, Scott, and Jeff, whose departure will leave a noticeable hole in the board and in the district. Rob and Jeff's background as seasoned educators and school administrators, along with Scott's vast knowledge in the construction industry as contractor or project manager, have proved invaluable to this board over the years in various committees and just contributions to the school. But it's who they are as human beings that we're going to miss most. Kind, compassionate, dedicated members of our community who have volunteered endless, and when I say endless, I mean endless, hours to the students and staff of 100 and Central and have worked tirelessly to make this district a better place. And although we look forward to welcoming our new members on January 3rd, these three guys are going to be sorely, sorely missed by the board and me personally. So thank you.
So there are resolutions in the Organizational Items section of our agenda tonight, just formalizing our memory as a school now of this time during which we were most honored to work with the three of you. So we'll have that later on in the agenda. And we have a little bit of cake for you backstage, too. So a quick note, and then we'll start to wrap up. I know we have a lot on the agenda tonight. It's a short action agenda, but we have a lot to go through here tonight. We've been digesting a lot of recent conversations and are working to redefine the structure of our student activities. You heard Mr. Cohen talk about the, just the sheer number of clubs that we have, and that's growing all of the time. The goal here is to bring more cohesion, more collaboration, more celebration, put more of that power in our students' hands, and more connection with many wonderful and talented expert partners that we have across the community. So we're going to share more about this soon, but I want to let you know we're growing more and more excited about the potential to redraw that landscape a little bit and make it easier for even more clubs to come together and do their work here at Central. So one of the issues we've seen, and I've talked about a bit, is we've seen some lack of leadership opportunities for kids over the past couple of years, particularly in some of our marginalized communities. And we can now begin to address that with some real deliberate and strong work. And I appreciate both Mr. Brant's and Mr. Cohen's work. Mr. Cohen's brought a lot of good thinking and a lot of great energy to that in his position as dean of students. So we can change what we're seeing through our student life and our student activities organization. So we've seen isolation. We've seen a compromised sense of empathy in some cases. Social media is working together with all of that, certainly against our climate and culture. And we can put students in positions to change all of that. So I'll have more on that for you soon. And it's also going to be a good platform for us to realize some innovative student representation to the board event as well. In this, though, we do have to turn to our policies for extracurricular activities and for co-curricular activities, our clubs. Not only do those policies have roots in realities that are, gosh, and language, gosh, from almost a quarter century ago, those policies go back to. They're confusing a little bit, and we talked about this in our Student Life and Program Committee, confusing a little bit in how they envision organizations like a club as different from the events that they do. The language and the policies and regs is very dicey. So we need to ensure that all of these opportunities also align to our more recent policies, like our CARE policy 8100. So we have some work to do as a board and with some stakeholders, our students, our staff members, and our community members, to align old and new policies and make sure that all of these policies recognize the newest realities that we're facing, the newest opportunities that we have for students. So that'll be a project in the new year for all of us. It's all good work to do. Tonight, we're going to finish off with a couple of quick presentations that we need to give to you tonight. Mr. Brant is here to provide the mandated School Safety Data Systems Report. We do this twice each school year. Tonight, he's reporting on incidents and data from the second half of last school year. Again, this is a mandated report. You have copies of it at the table so that we don't have to go down to the seats. If you want to bring the screen down for us. It's also in Board Docs, right, Ms. Spitzer? And you have an email with the PDF as well of the board members. Is that on, Mr. Brant? There you go. I think you got it now.
Just as we try to encourage and get more students involved and grow the numbers of students who are hitting certain heights in both the academics, activities, and athletic areas so we can increase the number of celebrations like we had tonight, there are some numbers every year that we want to decrease. And I guess the fortune here, twice a year, to provide information that is recorded to the state and sent into the state that reflects some of the incidents under the Student Safety Data Systems. So this report right here reflects the second half of last school year. So it's from January 1st, 2022, through June 30th of 2022. And incidents that get reported, this used to be called the Violence and Vandalism Report, but basically, there are incidents that take place either on school grounds or it might be associated with school under the areas of violence, vandalism, substance offenses, and weapons offenses. Here's an entire list of the type of categories or specific type of incidences that need to be reported. And I'm going to start with reporting a little bit on the numbers of harassment, intimidation, and bullying. So for the second half of last school year, we had 34 incidences that were reported to us to be investigated under the category of harassment, intimidation, and bullying. And of those 34, 18 of them ended up being confirmed incidences of that harassment, intimidation, and bullying. And I have a little breakdown there of the different categories of the different distinguishing characteristics of the targets, whether it's perceived or real. And broken up, and as you can see right there, eight others, sexual orientation and/or gender, three with race, three with disability, one with religion, and three are scattered in other areas. And teasing through those numbers there of the 18 incidences, there were 33 students. So you had some cases, there were five cases that had multiple students involved. And I just wanted to point out, too, not to try and dismiss or lessen the fact that there were 33 students involved in situations like this, but with a student body of over 2,600, it ends up being roughly 1.2% of the student body. And then in those larger clumped areas under violence, vandalism, substance offenses, and weapons offenses. Again, in that second half of last school year, there were 38 incidences that were under the category of violence. And that could be either a fight, assault, or some other category under violence, or some type of criminal threat. There were 34 students, individual students in those 38 cases, again, representing 1.3% of the student body. We had zero cases, not that we didn't have vandalism, but we had zero cases where we were able to identify students of vandalism. We had 27 cases of substance offenses. One thing to note, this doesn't count, what doesn't go under this category is if you have a student who reveals to a counselor themselves and looking for assistance for substance offenses. So these are 27 offenses where a student wasn't looking for help. And of those 27, it was 27 individual students. And then we were fortunate enough to have zero weapon situations in the second half of last school year. I just want to shift now to a list of some of the, and again, just some of the few programs that we have here at school to help boost up the students and to steer away from those incidences that we have to report each year. Again, one thing I wanted to point out, if you noticed, there were 27 incidences of substance offenses. And there were 27 individual students, which reflects that. Actually, no student was caught, if you would, twice, which I think is a good sign and that we are getting assistance with our SAC counselors, SAC, that's Student Assistance Counselors. Each grade level has a Student Assistance Counselor assigned to them. And whenever we have an incidence of substance offense, we pair them up with their counselor immediately. And they help guide them through that process of hopefully, if there is any type of addiction or just decision-making, to steer away from that. And then the last page here that I have is just a highlight of some of the resources and recommendations that every year when we reflect on these numbers, taking a look at places where we can improve our practices here day in and day out. And two of them that jump out at me on coming out of last year were the AM and PM supervision. We have many more students on campus. We have many more walkers now. We have students who are sticking around for activities after school. And that's some of those cases where we have incidents take place. Also, if you recall, in the beginning of the school year, we made a cognizant effort of resetting some of our cellphone regulations. Coming out of the pandemic, I think we were a bit eager to be open arms and welcome back to school and excited. And there were some areas that we realized we needed to tighten up. So back to that one list of the different types of distinguishing characteristics. One thing to note, a very common thread in many of them was that cyber or social media was a common thread in many of those different categories. So working on trying to make sure we get those cellphones away while we have those 80-minute blocks four times a day and get a focus on learning. That's an area, too, that hopefully, as we strengthen that area, that these numbers will decrease. Again, thanks for your time. And again, this is for the second half of last school year. And I'll be back in six months for another report. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Brant. Quick notes, you can keep the screen down. So the HIB and suspension report is always part of my monthly report. You can see that on the agenda here. And we moved the actual motions on HIBs to the Organizational Items section. It just feels more at home there to take action on the action portion of the agenda rather than in my report. So we moved it out there. And I did want to clarify, because there's been some conversation about this, we continue to see fewer HIB allegations than this time last year. They're still higher than we'd like, but it is fewer than last year. But I do remain concerned that the ones that are being shown to be HIBs are focused on issues of race, ethnicity, gender, identity, sexual orientation, and those similar characteristics that lead us to examine them as potential bias incidents. Now, a bias-related incident is different from a HIB. And you can have HIBs that are based on other characteristics that don't necessarily trip that circuit. So we're seeing HIBs gravitate towards that somewhat more, not somewhat, but certainly more serious end. And we saw that last year as well. We've talked about that before. And it's at the root of a lot of the empathy and anti-bias work that we've been at. The number of proven HIBs on this year's report so far is something I have to clarify also. It still reads zero. You know, we've had allegations so far this year, but the number of proven HIBs remains at zero for this year. That doesn't mean we don't have any that are proven. It just means that they're not yet reaching the end of the process. They haven't yet reached the end of the process where you voted on them, and they can be reported as confirmed HIBs. So tonight, in closed session, I'll report on several to you. In open session tonight, you're going to vote on a handful that I presented last month. So in our next report, you'll see that number begin to show proven HIBs. So two things are at work there. One, the process has to go through all of its steps before we list it as proven. And the second thing is, we're meeting once each month this year instead of twice each month this year. So you see that that number's not changing as quickly as it did last year. So it's a little bit lagging this year. But that'll start to catch up to us as we go into the new year. All right, so at this point, I want to turn to Mrs. Jessica Cangelosse-Hayde. She's here with Mr. Brendan McIsaac and Mr. Bob Cole to discuss work in their departments to close some of the specific learning gaps that we've been talking about through the assessment scores that we've shared, and also work to achieve equity goals that are hoping to solve some of the disproportionalities that we've been seeing and talking about in our achievement and course-taking trends. So Jessica, I'll turn it over to you.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Moore. And thank you for welcoming me back again this month. We're very happy to be back because I'm so proud of our academics here. And I know for the past two months, we put a pause on our department presentations because I was presenting standardized test scores. So tonight, we have Mr. Bob Cole, our math and computer science supervisor, and we have Mr. Brendan McIsaac, our English, drama, and film supervisor, to present to you about their departments. And you'll see this is really continuation of the story that we were seeing through our standardized assessment. This presents sort of a fuller picture. Instead of focusing on just one assessment, you're going to better understand what is it that we do here at Central. It is also different than last year's presentations, and I thought it was important to reiterate, that we will not be reviewing kind of that basic information about each department because we've done that already. Instead, we're focusing on what's new and what are we doing to achieve some of the board goals that you all have set up. So I do want to bring up Mr. Bob Cole without further ado to present on the math department.
Thank you, Ms. Cangelosse-Hayde. Good evening, and thank you for the opportunity to provide an update on behalf of the math department. Our school year is off to a good start and continuing to run smoothly, having recently crossed through the completion of the first third of the school year. We continue to work hard, returning students to an even more normal school experience in the 2022-23 school year. Tonight, I'd like to share goals, discuss expanding data toolkits, highlight some of our support and intervention strategies, and share what's new and what's next. Our department goals were created to further support and operationalize district goals, which broadly overarching the four focus areas of wellness, powerful learning, active partnerships, and service. We began this year really focused on building relationships with students, knowing that teaching and learning is, at its core, a uniquely human interaction. We believe students have the greatest chance to flourish with curricular content when they feel supported and cared for. We value classroom interactions and dynamically receiving student feedback in person and in real time. We continue to use tools and strategies to personalize learning for students and build a culture of belonging. We seek to celebrate the process of arriving at answers, not just the answers themselves. And this, of course, includes allowing students to make mistakes and to learn from them. Our goals also incorporate equity initiatives where we look across our entire math program and within every classroom. and within every classroom to ensure students have access to compelling programs and high levels of engagement. And lastly, we continue to analyze student learning using available diagnostic tools and benchmark data. I look forward to highlighting a few of these resources for you. We aim to know our students through more than just one lens, and over the last several years, we've started using various applications to monitor and measure student learning. While our Aspen grade books are mostly closely aligned to the curriculum, we are able to further augment our perspectives with Linkit Form A, B, and C testing, IXL Diagnostics and Analytics, and we make reference to student performance results on a variety of standardized tests. Some of the tools, like the PSAT, are relatively new to us, but we hope to create data dashboards that can tune us into trouble spots so we can make adjustments and alter student trajectories when needed. Our teaching team is already quantitative and analytical, so we feel like we're well-positioned to look at data and analyze results. We hope that our familiarity with multiple measures will help improve student course performance and identify students who may benefit from additional support and intervention or who may be poised to accelerate learning and be sufficiently challenged. As we continue to learn which tools are most valuable and under what circumstances, we hope to correlate these tools in order to derive meaning from all the available data. In curricular teams, we are exploring with leading questions. What are we expecting to see? What seems to be in greatest need of attention? And as important, what adjustments should we be considering based on the data? We are excited about reviewing data in teams and developing our capacities to make informed We're entering our second year of implementing IXL, and I want to thank you in advance for providing support for this robust application. IXL is a popular learning platform, especially in New Jersey, where approximately one in every three districts are using it in some capacity. At Hundred and Central, we are using IXL math modules, and we're especially focused on using this within the three core areas of Algebra I, Geometry, and Algebra II. That being said, it is able to support our students in pre-calculus, calculus, statistics, and test prep such as the SAT. IXL offers support to individual students by presenting a selected set of problems for a particular standard or topic. Our teaching teams have provided feedback that these questions maintain the context of the questions presented in course notes and worksheets, so curricular integration has been rather easy and seamless. The teacher can select a set of problems for a particular standard. These are formalized into skill plans and assigned by the teacher. The program is sophisticated in that can tailor the difficulty level to the student, it adapts to student responses. If students are answering correctly, it follows a progression and increases difficulty level. Likewise, if a student is answering incorrectly, it is able to return to scaffolding questions and helps build proficiency for the struggling learner. Like Linkit, IXL helps teachers drill down by standard, by topic, and by skill. As I'm in classrooms, I'm noticing teachers build this into planned instructional segments, and they are using a live dashboard to monitor student progress. As students are working, the teacher can communicate through messaging with students or to the whole class, and students develop a dynamic SMART score over time indicative of their skill proficiency levels. We are noticing improvement in student motivation and confidence as students see their efforts reflected in mathematical understanding. Further, we plan to complete district snapshots at various times throughout the year. As you may know, Linkit offers a comprehensive data warehouse. This environment provides access to current and historical data and allows us to see data in formats that would otherwise be time-consuming to construct. For example, the small snip on this slide is showing student data for Algebra II students and in the chronological order that students would have taken these various assessments. So from left to right, the New Jersey Start Strong, which is taken in the fall, the Linkit Form B, which is taken in the winter, and then the Grade Eight Algebra II NJSLA, which would be taken in the spring. At the highest level, you'll notice it creates quick traffic light views for various proficiency levels, and the dashboard can be accessed by multiple stakeholders. There are reports that allow teachers to look at data sliced by class, by student, and by test. Beyond that, we can look at data by various subgroups and/or standards. Teachers are able to compare baseline data within PLC planning teams where we seek to identify trends and refine the questions we are asking of the data. Linkit Form A sets a baseline against the growth, pardon me, Linkit Form A sets a baseline against which growth is measured in subsequent Form B, C tests. Our math courses are driven by content, so in some cases, we'll see initial areas with partial proficiencies that are not immediate areas of concern. We'll expect increases as the course presents specific unit of instruction. Linkit allows us to drill down into student results by standard, by topic, and skill, and this slide provides qualitative insights into those skills tested in Form A back in October with the highest and lowest levels of mastery based on Form A results. There were 317 algebra students completing Form A, and their areas of strength had approximate levels of mastery between 60 and 70%. That would be the column in green. And then whereas the areas of need were approximately 25%. This is the case for the 449 Geometry students and also the 438 Algebra II students approximately. Keep in mind, most of the topics on the right have not been taught yet, they are future topics within the curriculum. We are also looking at skills corresponding to current units of instruction, including solving equations in Algebra I, coordinate geometry in geometry classes, and factoring and rational expressions in Algebra II. Students who scored only partial in these areas become candidates for support and intervention. We deploy the following intervention mechanisms according to a multi-tiered support system. And specific to RTI, or Response to Intervention, it's lower on the slide, we have teachers available in each of our eight instructional blocks. These RTI assignments are built into teaching schedules, and each teacher serves a caseload of between six and 10 students. We currently serve approximately 80 students, providing support in core courses, including Algebra I, Algebra II, and Geometry. We are actively developing data dashboards, bridging various elements of data in order to deploy support resources to those students who need it most. The list is actively monitored and managed by an RTI coordinator who receives recommendations and monitors information. We continue to feel lucky to have an IT support team who are responsive to on-demand data requests and melding data together in spreadsheet form for sharing and analysis. We continue to monitor the effectiveness of our RTI structure, especially as it relates to intensity, which accounts for both frequency and duration of our interventions. New for this year, we are excited to have added a cybersecurity course, Math 365. It is running successfully this fall with a full enrollment of 24 students for its state view. We are able to use the lab and cyber range through Brookdale College, and it runs at no cost to the district. This is particularly helpful as we did not need to create and partition an environment in which intentional hacks and breaches might otherwise occur. Ethics is also an important component of the curriculum where students explore what I'll call shoulder wisdom, distinguishing between two very different and equally important questions. What can I do? What should I do? We are also excited to have expanded our math curriculum to include some advanced topics, including linear algebra. This course was created as we identified the need for further enrichment and it complements some of our existing coursework, namely honors discrete math, to create a progression otherwise requiring an independent study. This embodies our interest in creating powerful learning experiences tailored to the needs and interests of our students. Finally, as we look ahead, we are continuing to make curricular adjustments and work actively with our sending districts to help us meet our goal of helping students complete Algebra I in ninth grade. We are designing support mechanisms and course configurations for next year that increase the opportunities afforded students within their four-year math pathway. We are expanding language support to sections of Algebra II, and we've created a scheduling structure that puts sequential courses within the same block to accommodate the possibility of students accelerating into credit-bearing course according to their own pace, not according to the pace imposed by our curriculum. In computer science, we'll add a second semester of cybersecurity, joining a handful of schools across the state in offering such opportunities, and we'll continue to look for partnerships with higher ed institutions that allow our students to create a college transcript and begin earning credit for college while still enrolled at Hundred and Central. This includes monitoring the development of a new AP pre-calculus course offered through the College Board. This concludes my presentation this evening, and again, I appreciate your time and your support.
Thank you, Mr. Cole. Thank you. And closing out my report tonight, can you believe it, closing out my report tonight, you have a question for Mr. Cole?
Got it. Question. Can I ask, Algebra I?
Yeah. My apologies.
Thank you for the comprehensive report. I am curious, the big question in my mind, we did not do so well on New Jersey SLA in Algebra I. Do you trust that, the big question, do you trust that performance? Do our internal measures, Linkit, IXL, even our PSATs, do they show similar proficiencies? Can you comment on that?
These are challenging times, and there has been disruption with the pandemic. But each year, as we move forward, we're returning to more regular pace and also more regular curriculum. So we are really excited about what the fall has presented. We feel like our intervention and support has grown this fall, and you know, we will not have results until next spring, but we believe that we're well-positioned for improvement in Algebra I.
Our internal measures, do those show differing data than the state assessments? Are you confident that our students are doing better than the profile that New Jersey SLA conveys?
Very confident that they are.
Yeah, one of the things we'll see too, and it's relevant to both of these subjects, is when the PSAT scores have come in now from the October administration, we'll be presenting on that in the coming months, and that'll tell us a lot about NJSLA and also the other tests, because we have a lot of faith in PSAT to tell us something. Yeah. All right. Thank you, Mr. Cole.
Thank you.
Mr. McIsaac is batting cleanup.
The bitter end. Thank you, everybody. I will do my best to make this as informative and entertaining as possible. I put together kind of a collage slideshow of snapshots of the past two years, and I'll kind of talk about the evolution of what's going on in language arts and certainly how this sort of impacts everything from testing to our use in data. It was obviously a great start to the year to see kids and teachers interacting face-to-face and in close quarters once again. I will continue to shout out and commend the quality of my department. The staff members are constantly innovating and recreating and inspiring in what they do, many examples of which you actually heard through the other presentations here tonight. There was part of me that sort of said, hey, I'm done. If the kids can do all of that after we've worked with them, what more can we do? But we do continue to do more. Teachers constantly revise and present opportunities for research, creative exploration. And I'm going to talk about individualization and personalization on three distinct levels where it plays out in the department. The first is sort of at the activity and assessment level. Last year, when I presented, I talked about many of our English experiences were we read a class as a book and then we wrote something as a class about that book. And our ability to really afford students' choice is a big driver in a lot of assignments, whether that's the topic they're exploring or the particular angle that they're taking into a topic, whether it's our approach to teaching, which emphasizes a lot of conferencing, getting to know kids one-on-one, what they're doing with their reading, what they're doing with their writing. And everything I put on the screen tonight is an assignment from an English class or a picture of kids working towards those assignments. And right here, you see the kinds of creative and imaginative things kids will begin to do when you offer them the opportunity for their ideas and their questions to guide their learning. They begin to create products that look like real writing in the real world, and they answer questions that they genuinely want to know the answer to. Whether it's going to the media center for book tastings, whether they're blogging and pulling together and synthesizing their understanding of a book, the resources that they've read, putting it on publishable kinds of blog formats, or exploring questions between literature and nonfiction reading that come together, that our teachers are constantly coaching and working closely with kids to help them realize the things that engage and excite them. Simple example in the upper right-hand corner is a slideshow. That's a literature circle where kids read a book in common, and they come together with questions, with quotes, with analysis, and they run that discussion themselves. A far cry from what many of us may have experienced in high school where we sat and teacher asked questions of the class. Teachers now observe, interact, monitor, and float while multiple discussions are taking place. And again, the level of what's happening is happening sometimes at an individual level, sometimes at a small group level, sometimes at a whole class level, and the thinking that they're doing is made visible in many different ways, from in the upper right-hand corner where you have those sort of organizers and charts, to the lower-left-hand corner where March Madness poetry plays out on the halls of Hundred and Central, to the center where we give students their first pass at their college essay during their junior year, which then often becomes the launch point for the writing that they actually do to get into college the following year. The curriculum design itself seeks to balance out whole-class, small-group, and independent work, and this year, now that we have time back into the curriculum, we want to revitalize our e-portfolio, which is really an opportunity for kids to reflect and report out on the work they've done and the growth they've undertaken as readers and as writers, and is really positioning us when we re-engage with the idea of the portrait of a graduate preparing for students with the kinds of portfolios and products that they will need when they go out into the world. And again, on a metacognitive level, we are engaging with students, asking them to reflect on their learning. We're asking them to set goals about themselves as readers and as writers, and always finding that balance between the physical handwritten sort of visualization of understanding to leveraging contemporary digital platforms like Padlet, where kids, this in this assignment, went out and took pictures of their neighborhoods so that they could do detailed writing focusing on sensory imagery. Additionally, reading and writing are the fundamentals of what we do, and we lean into it as much as we can, and we're leaning into it more now that we've come back from the pandemic. We are always aspiring to have kids read and always to have them write, and the things that they create, put them in conversation, offer them opportunities to analyze, connect, and reflect, and/or in the middle case here, some new equipment with the film studies class allows them to create their own original products to demonstrate their ability to illustrate what it is they're learning. Third level on which we individualize and personalize is course design itself. You heard a little bit tonight about the AP Capstone Seminar and Research accomplishments. I will note, on the right-hand side is the book written by two of our colleagues who have presented at national conferences, so when I say they literally wrote the book on individualizing curriculum, they did. And they're the ones who brought AP Seminar and Research here, they're the ones who are also teaching our new senior English inquiry course that really puts the student in the driver seat of what they want that senior year experience to be. In addition to that, we have dual enrollment courses with RVCC, and we have independent study opportunities both in English and in drama. And when you let kids drive their learning, you start to get the things that look like dissertations at the college level. Kids are posing questions and exploring subjects in a way that you do not typically see in high schools. And at the end of the year, they get up on this stage or in other stages, and they defend their research to an audience of academics or outside advisors to reveal the results of their work. of their work. Or in the cases of the upper right, you have students who take those research skills and then go and participate in UN-level conferences because they have developed some of those abilities through this skill set and through these classes. Students create individual, original documentaries, exploring questions that they pose, where they pull together history, they interview teachers, and they narrate 20, 30 minutes of a documentary to pull together what it is they have learned from that process. So again, everything we're doing in class, when you walk in, kids are reading, kids are writing. Up on the screen, we're highlighting what are the skills that we're targeting, what do we want you to practice? And we're using technology all along the way. We have kids writing on paper but submitting digitally, creating authentic assessments that are modeled on real writing in the real world. And from a creative and dramatic standpoint, it affords the opportunity for students to get up on stage, to practice their production. And in the case of last year, two students, as part of an independent study, capstoning their dramatic years here, fully acted, rehearsed, and produced a, I don't remember, how long was that production, Mrs. Enterline, the last five years?
Two hours.
A two-hour production, two actors, one boy, one girl, did the whole thing. It was a phenomenal, off-Broadway-level-quality production that they did. And those are the opportunities, and that's the kind of teacher and instructor who affords those things to happen. Shifting over to data use, we've been using data. I introduced the introduction of Linkit last year. We have our benchmark assessments on grades nine, 10, and 11. We're also using AP Classroom for their unit reviews a number of times throughout the year. This illustrates sort of the sequence that teachers go through when they receive and analyze data. These are some of the questions that they ask. They try to identify patterns and/or gaps, and they're learning how to use the tools to sort that information, to see patterns and trends that they might not otherwise see. And then they come together as a team of teachers who teach that course to say, okay, how can we improve this? What can we do? What are things that you've done that have been successful? What are new things that we can try? And they continue to monitor that work throughout the year. Where we see some of that is exemplified here. Here's some of the standards that show up on those assessments about the skills that the kids need to work on, and beneath them, bulleted, are some of the ideas and the responses that the teachers have decided they are going to implement in the classroom to address those specific issues and monitor as they go forward. Where does this go? Well, last year, we started the year where there were two, a couple of standards that we highlighted at the beginning of the year for our freshmen and sophomores, and by the end of the year, they came up as demonstrating high growth on those standards over the course of the year. Now, was that a result of a specific instruction? It's a little bit hard to say, but the teachers were aware of what they were trying to address. And having it go from average to high growth shows that just the teacher awareness alone enables them and informs them and empowers them to be more responsive to their instruction in the classroom. The one in the middle, I think, is a great example of this here. At the beginning of the year, on the standard of describing, identifying, describing claims, students on our AP Language scored at level one out of three. One month later, they all scored at level two out of three. And when I went back to that group and I said, wow, what did you do that got upwards of 200 kids to improve one full level? They said, we've been teaching the class. That's it. The class is designed to address these things. However, they will pay attention to that, and they will continue to use that to inform what they do going forward. As Ms. Cangialosi reported last month, and up until the pandemic, 100 and Central and Language Arts continues to outperform both state and DFG averages. And before the pandemic, as we were implementing many of the things that I've presented tonight, we saw that we, over time, were able to reduce the gaps that we were seeing between boys and girls, that we were seeing in the performance of students who qualify for free and reduced lunch, and to see a performance difference where the reading skills were catching up to where the writing skills were. So in three instances, we were able to, over a series of years, shrink those gaps. And I anticipate that as we get back into the regimen and routine of assessment and practice, we will get right back into the swing of doing that work again and seeing those kinds of results. How are we responding? Mr. Cole talked a little bit about RTI. We are trying to increase the number of reading and writing units that we're implementing by sort of slimming them down and really focusing on time to read, time to write, and responding to those things, and embedding practices in the classroom from quick writes to mentor text study that focus the kids on those key skills with passages that they can manage. We have two years of Linkit data now that we're using to identify students who might need additional assistance. We have three RTI teachers who pull those students out of the classroom periodically to do additional practice and skills review with them. But as we see needs that might exist across a complete level of students, talking about like the juniors this year, if there are key skills that we're seeing that broadly need to be addressed, those same RTI folks are going to push in and assist with instruction for that entire group of students as well. And that's just another way that we're going to try and focus on those skills, get that extra practice, as kids are multiple years removed from these standardized assessments. And we're still waiting to see what the state is going to decide as far as what's going to count and what's not going to count, but we're going forward as though it all counts. Additionally, we just track that performance. We afford opportunities both through spring and summer tutorials, and we're trying to find ways to really partner with kids and parents to say, all right, your son or daughter needs additional help. We want to work with you, whether it's with them coming to tutorial or by having these additional focus opportunities in the classroom. That's some of the experimentation that we're trying. That's a little bit different this year because it affords us the opportunity to really zero in on the juniors. Once more, great staff, does great work, and I want to thank you for your attention and if you have any questions.
I have a comment. In working with teachers in training at the College of New Jersey, one of the most difficult things for me to convey to them is letting go. And it seems, based on what you've told us tonight, that if we're rating our language arts teachers on Danielson Framework Domain III instruction, that you're getting fours and fives there, which is tremendous. I am very, very impressed with the work our teachers have been doing. Thank you.
Thank you.
Dr. Charney has a question for you, Mr. McIsaac.
Yes. Yeah, I echo Rob's comments, commentary as well. I'm very impressed with how the English department approaches teaching and learning. I think, I do want to point out that what you're doing with the test data is really a very organic approach. You're taking one to two standards and tracking those instead of, there's a lot of missteps with big data where you look at, many districts will look at every standard or nine standards and try to work with improvement on those all nine standards, and that becomes unwieldy. And I would say 50 to 60% of the time, they fail in that regard. But I would say your approach, again, is very targeted. It yields some very reasonable data that you can track and have professional discussions about, so I applaud that. The one question I do have is, in your interventions, I know that our fifth block is voluntary and that students, we have teachers, I guess, staff this period, and students can come and seek help. What about the students that don't do that? What kinds of mediation, positive incentives? What are we doing with those students?
Well, I will say that in years past, when we would invite students to come to a spring tutorial or a summer remediation, you were lucky to get maybe a 10% return on the invitations that you put out there. So the majority of kids were just not coming. It was, if the kids who were coming were the kids whose parents were making them go. What we're trying to do now is two different things. One is, we're really trying to communicate and form a little bit more of a partnership with the parents to identify the need and in recognition that these are students who are going to sit for an assessment that, for as far as we know, is going to count for them for graduation purposes. So we want to signal if we're seeing in the data that students need additional practice, we want to invite the parent, the kid, and the teacher to either make a plan during tutorial where there is that little more of a personalized touch. It's coming from the teacher. It's not coming from some central office, and you're going to meet with a teacher who you may not even know. And then secondly, where we can focus on, as you were saying, sort of those real key standards, that's where the teachers are sitting down and saying, all right, it's crazy for me to like dream up all this stuff that I'm going to do in tutorial. How can I bring that back into the classroom in a way that's embedded and intelligent? And has the kids practicing that routinely in ways that they may not even realize is that kind of practice? Because it's small, or it's bite-sized, and it's with the reading and writing tasks that we're doing at hand. And then additionally, to work with the RTI teachers who have a sort of script of steps and strategies that they employ in a one-on-one situation, to partner with those teachers to say, I will come in the room with you while this is happening. I will be that extra set of eyes and ears, or the person who can sit down with a small group of kids or hop around one-to-one to assist with that. So I think that's where we're looking to take some of that approach and put a little bit of a different spin on it, bring it a little more closer to home in terms of the kid in the classroom.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right. I will wrap up tonight where we began this report, where we began the year, wrap up the year, where we began the year with your mission statement, which Dr. Charney read out for us tonight, wellness, powerful learning, and partnerships. So when wellness and powerful learning come together, I think we get the kinds of personalization and individualization that you heard about from Mr. Cole and Mr. McIsaac. Kids are known for their strengths and weaknesses, and they are partnered with to close those gaps. When our powerful learning and our partnerships come together, that's where we're seeing our service opportunities start to flourish. And that's where a lot of the work that you heard about from our clubs and our teams, you know, where that lives as we start to create leadership opportunities for students in the community to help be problem solvers in our community and not just problem admirers. And then lastly, when wellness and partnerships come together, we see our equity work. And that's all of the work and all of the information you've heard about, not just here tonight, but throughout, and the work that you've all done in some important policies that we have to make sure that students feel belonging and inclusion in their community and are able to learn and grow through all of the other stuff that we're doing. At the center of it all is the teaching and learning, the nuts and bolts that you heard about tonight as well. And again, I go back, last month talked about my gratitude for the policies that you all have given at this board table over some very difficult years. We wouldn't be in the position we're in, strong positions academically and all around. Wouldn't be there without those guiding lights. So I appreciate that and thank you for that work as well. And with that, Mrs. Hughes, I'm concluding my report.
Thank you, Dr. Moore. I'm going to quickly run through the organizational items before we get to the agenda items for Residence Forum. The first one is board member recognition. I'm going to ask for a motion to approve the following resolution. Dr. Jeffrey Charney, whereas your personal commitment to quality education, your valued participation in establishing effective policies, and your readiness to render services in seeking educational excellence have contributed immeasurably to the progress of our school system. Be it resolved that on behalf of your colleagues, teachers, and students, we thank you for your dedicated service and wish you good health and happiness in your years to come. I'd like to acknowledge that Dr. Charney has served on the Board of Education from 2020 to 2022, has served as the 100 and County Educational Services Commission representative from 2021 to 2022, Student Life and Program Committee, District Evaluation Advisory Committee 2020 to 2021, and currently on the Operation and Transportation Committee, which includes the Joint Transportation Commission as well. So thank you, Dr. Charney, for your time and for your commitment to the board. Can I have a second on that motion? We'll vote.
Second.
Thank you. I have a motion in a second. Any discussion?
All right.
Oh, thank you. Okay, can I vote on that, please?
Dr. Charney?
No.
Yes.
Mr. Fowler?
Yes.
Mrs. Kellogg?
Yes.
Mr. Nichol?
Yes.
Mr. Richard?
Yes.
And Mrs. Hughes?
Yes. Oh, yes, motion carries. Thank you. I would like to move for Scott Nichol. Whereas your personal commitment to quality education, your valued participation in establishing effective policies, and your readiness to render services in seeking educational excellence have contributed immeasurably to the progress of our school system. Be it resolved that on behalf of your colleagues, teachers, and students, we thank you for your dedicated service and wish you good health and happiness in your years to come. Mr. Nichol has been a Board of Education member from 2019 to 2020. He has served on the Operations and Transportation Committee and has been the chair for this year. 2019 to 2020, 2020 to 2021 also includes the Joint Transportation Commission as well, the 100 and County Polytech Liaison from 2019 to 2020, 2020 and 2021, and served on the 100 and Central School Foundation 2021 and 2020 to 2022. Thank you, Mr. Nichol, for your time on the board. And can I have a second on that motion, please?
Second.
Thank you. I have a motion in a second. Any discussion?
The only thing I want to note is that he's currently chair, too, right? So we'll add that in there as well, that he's chair 22...
Yes.
Twenty-one, twenty-two.
Twenty-one, twenty-two.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yes, so through the 22 calendar.
And lastly, I would like to move for Robert Richard.
We got to vote.
Oh, I'm sorry. That's right, we didn't do a vote on that. Sorry, Scott.
Dr. Charney?
Yes.
Mr. Davidson?
Yes.
Mr. Fowler?
Yes.
Mrs. Kellogg?
Yes.
Mr. Nichol?
Yes.
Mr. Richard?
Yes.
And Mrs. Hughes?
Yes.
Oh, yes, motion carries.
Thank you. And I would finally like to move the following resolution for Robert Richard. Whereas your personal commitment to quality education, your valued participation in establishing effective policies, and your readiness to render services in seeking educational excellence have contributed immeasurably to the progress of our school system. Be it resolved that on behalf of your colleagues, teachers, and students, we thank you for your dedicated service and wish you good health and happiness in your years to come. Mr. Richard has been a Board of Education member from 2017 to current. He was vice president this year, 2021 to 2022. He served on the Student Life and Program Committee, including chairing that committee from 2019 on. He also served as the 100 and Central School Board Delicate from 2019 to current, served on the reopening ad hoc committee in 2020 to 2021, coming out of the pandemic, and currently serves on the Racism, Equity, and Diversity Committee this year. So, and that's also for this year as well. It only says 2021. Yeah. So thank you, Rob, for your time and dedication to the district. And may I please have a second to that motion?
A second.
Thank you. I have a motion in a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, may I have a roll call, please?
Dr. Charney?
Yes.
Mr. Davidson?
Yes.
Mr. Fowler?
Yes.
Mrs. Kellogg?
Yes.
Mr. Nichol?
Yes.
Mr. Richard?
Yes.
And Mrs. Hughes?
Yes.
Oh, yes, motion carries.
Thank you. And lastly, in organizational items, we have a number of HIBs to move. I'd like to move HIB 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, and 10.
Second.
I have a motion in a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, can I have a roll call vote, please?
Dr. Charney?
Yes.
Mr. Davidson?
Yes.
Mr. Fowler?
Yes.
Mrs. Kellogg?
Yes.
Mr. Nichol?
Yes.
Mr. Richard?
Yes.
And Mrs. Hughes?
Yes.
Oh, yes, motion carries.
Thank you. We will now move into our first Residence Forum for items on the agenda. Is there anybody here who would like to speak to items on the agenda? Okay, seeing none, we'll move right into committee reports. Mr. Richard, can we please have your final Student Life and Program Committee report?
Hope my finger doesn't get tired holding this button down. Okay, we met December 7, and I have six items to move tonight for approval. Item one is the second reading of Policy 9560, Administration of School Surveys. The policy has been rewritten to reflect the enactment of a new statute that allows school districts... school districts to administer an anonymous voluntary survey, assessment, analysis, or evaluation concerning student health if prior notification with an option to opt-out has been provided to parents when the survey has the potential to reveal information about specific listed topics. Ms. Cangelosi-Hade noted the policy's relevance as the district will be administering two voluntary forms in the near future. This includes getting to know you questionnaire from the Counseling Department as well as the Pride Survey. The Pride Survey is part of the district's partnership with Prevention Resources and stands for Pride Risk and Protective Factor questionnaire. This anonymous survey has been conducted nationally for over 30 years to take core measures on adolescent alcohol use, drug use, and risk behaviors. The second item is tuition and transportation. Ms. Cangelosi-Hade reviewed the revisions to the tuition and transportation agreements. These have been amended as a result of change in the number of days in a school year for these students. Item number three is North Hunterdon Voorhees students attending our ELL program. Ms. Cangelosi-Hade reviewed the agreement with North Hunterdon Voorhees to have an additional ELL student from their district attend our school. The district will now receive nine out-of-district placements to its ELL program. We have early graduation on the docket tonight as well for two students. And number five, we have a staff research proposal. Ms. Cangelosi-Hade reviewed a research proposal from Hunterdon Central Science teacher Cheryl Shawn as part of the Planting Science Digging Deeper research study conducted by BSCS Science Learning, the Botanical Society of America, University of Colorado at Colorado Springs. This study investigates the effects of quality curriculum, in-depth professional learning, and mentoring by professional scientists to improve student outcome in the content of cell energetics. All student data used in the research will be de-identified. And last item for vote tonight is a new club, the Jewish Student Alliance. Mr. Brandt reviewed plans for this new club and discussed the plans for the gathering of faith co-curricular clubs on a monthly basis to join as one interfaith group. This has already been occurring with other student affinity clubs. We had a couple of items that we talked about that are not for vote tonight. One of these happens to be changes in the 2324 program of studies. The district will be adding three new courses, Biomedical Sciences IV, Cyber Security II, and Introduction to Broadcasting. Biomedical Sciences IV is a capstone course for our Biomedical Sciences Academy students. Cyber Security II is designed for students who are interested in exploring careers in cybersecurity and is the continuation of Cyber Security I. Introduction to Broadcasting is an introductory course that provides students with opportunities to get experience with the tools used in the creation of audio and video productions. Students will learn how to use microphones, audio mixers, et cetera. This course is being offered as a semester course in the district's current Radio One and TV Video One courses will be offered as semester courses as well. Additionally, the Health and Phys Ed Department has streamlined its offerings to align with revised student learning standards from the state of New Jersey and to implement more choice and personalized fitness and wellness within the Health and PE programs. Finally, we discussed in our committee District Policy 2430. Mr. Fowler was a guest in that presentation, and he raised a question from the community on whether or not the recent events have revealed any issue with implementing that policy along with Policies 5755 and 8100. Co-curricular activities are primarily governed by 2430, and the language within that policy references activities, the word activities, in two different ways. First, an activity as a co-curricular club or organization, and secondly, as an activity being an event of such club or organization. The committee discussed the policy language as it pertains to accessibility of co-curricular activities to all students, specifically noting co-curricular activities that require auditions, have academic or other eligibility requirements, or have limited attendance events. Policy 2430 forbids restrictions to access on the basis of race, color, creed, religion, gender, national origin, ancestry, social or economic status, or non-applicable disability, but does not forbid limited attendance events or membership qualifications. The committee noted that newer policies and statements, in particularly 8100, are not worded in a similar way. The committee agreed that policy and Regulation 2430 needs to be reviewed more closely and updated through a coordinated effort involving representatives from multiple stakeholders. That project would need to investigate specifically whether there is a tension between the need of a club formed to provide safety and a community to a marginalized or minoritized group of students through limited attendance events and the need to provide open access. And that is my report for tonight. And with that, I'd like to move items 1-1 through 1-6 for approval.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Richard. I have a motion in a second. Is there any discussion? Dr. Charney?
I'm getting it all out while I can here. So, I do want to point out the staff research proposal. I've been back and forth with Jess on this because I'm interested. It's really a unique model, have teachers participate in this, what is a national curriculum, BSCS. Rob and I taught that many years long ago. And this really is an interesting statistical treatment of how learning may, the hypothesis is how learning may grow if there's a scientist sort of at your side. This would not exactly be at your side, but it would be available in communicating with the teacher. And the studies, I understand, has a control where the teacher is not privy to the help of the scientist. This is really what's known as a cognitive apprenticeship. And I think, believe it or not, this school did participate in this prior to that. I think Rob and I, probably the only ones that know about it, but it's called the Wachsmann Student Scholars Program. It took place in the 80s, and you had staff involved. Students were actually doing graduate-level molecular genetics research with a teacher here, as well as scientists at the Wachsmann Institute at Rutgers University that would mentor both the teacher and the student. So, I applaud this approach. I think it's really an innovative approach. I'm interested in the research that develops. I did want to outline that for the board and the public. It's really quite unique, and it's actually a testament to the district that they're willing to participate in this and that the teacher is willing, more than willing, to engage in this important research. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Charney.
Any other comments? Hearing none, can I have a roll call vote, please?
Dr. Charney?
Yes.
Mr. Davidson?
Yes.
Mr. Fowler?
Yes.
Mrs. Kellogg?
Yes.
Mr. Nichol?
Yes.
Mr. Richard?
Yes.
And Mrs. Hughes?
Yes.
Oh, yes, motion carries.
Thank you. Mr. Nichol, Operations and Transportation, please.
The Operations and Transportation Committee met on Tuesday, December 6. Discussed ongoing construction work, including several emergency repairs that were necessary and that are up for approval, including underground electric wire repair, 910 boiler room valve replacement, and a 910 chiller repair. We have a couple of resolutions, including resolution binding Hunterdon Central Regional High School to purchase electric generation services as well as natural gas services through the Alliance for Competitive Energy Services, ACES. We have a couple of requests for proposal that are shown on the agenda. We are looking to move to accept FY 23 emergent capital maintenance needs funding from the NJSDA to the tune of $71,232. And we need to approve a joint transportation agreement with North Hunterdon Regional High School for one student. With that, I would like to move items H1 through H17.
Thank you, Mr. Nichol. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any comments or questions for Mr. Nichol?
Just one thing to highlight in the work here as well. You'll see some things here related to changes that we're going to be making to our long-range facility plan down the road. So, there are some preparatory steps here, demographic study, and some other things as we look at just the current state of our long-range facility plan and how we want to move forward with instructional innovation and some other, you know, necessary facility repairs, just an opportunity to recast all of that now post-pandemic. So, we're looking forward to that. That's going to be great discussion in the new year, and away we go.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Hearing none, can I have a roll call vote, please?
Dr. Charney?
Yes.
Mr. Davidson?
Yes.
Mr. Fowler?
Yes.
Mrs. Kellogg?
Yes.
Mr. Nichol?
Yes.
Mr. Richard?
Yes.
And Mrs. Hughes?
Yes.
Oh, yes, motion carries.
Thank you. Mr. Davidson, personnel, please.
Yes. First, we have two retirements. We have resignations, two resigna, yes, two resignations. We have contractual appointments, two of those, per diem appointments, six, okay? This includes substitute teachers. We have hourly appointments, which are basically, in this case, there are 10, and they include AM supervision and HCTV student technicians and SAT review course instructors in math and English. We have minimum rate increases. Now, these are rate changes that are given to really pretty basic level employees. In this case, HCTV student technicians are being raised to, I believe it's a minimum that we are required to reach, so that's an item. And there are 11 of them, excuse me, no, 31, 31 of them. We've got advisors to schedule seat positions for clubs, five of them, scheduled E-coaches. Well, we have four of them. These are baseball and basketball. Professional development for the month coming, four applications for courses, and leaves of absence for FMLA reasons, for custodians, bus drivers, and one teacher. We have longevity increases. This is the kind of increase that occurs in a contract where people automatically get an increase when they pass an anniversary date from the time of their employment, and the contract can say for every so many years, you get an increase. So, that kind of happens automatically. In this case, we have nine people getting that adjustment. Item 113 is student teaching observers. We customarily have one, and here we have a chemistry teacher observer from Fairleigh Dickinson. And finally, we have six block stipend, which is for teachers that will be working the extra block, and is prorated according to their salary and assigned by their time clock. So, these are the 14 items that we have. I would like to have a motion to move these items.
Thank you, Mr. Davidson.
So, moved.
Second.
Thank you. I have a motion in a second. Any discussion?
Just recognizing our retirements, and particularly Sharon Sweeney was one of the first teachers I met when I arrived here in 2017. So, sweetheart, and I'm going to, sad to see her go, but she's on to a lovely retirement.
Any other discussion? May I have a roll call vote, please?
Dr. Charney?
Yes.
Mr. Davidson?
Yes.
Mr. Fowler?
Yes.
Mrs. Kellogg?
Yes.
Mr. Nichol?
Yes.
Mr. Richard?
Yes.
And Mrs. Hughes?
Yes.
Oh, yes, motion carries.
Thank you. Racism Equity and Diversity, Ms. Noel is not here tonight. Dr. Moore, do you have anything to add?
Yeah, we met today to talk about some updates, a lot of things that I discussed in my opening report about the reconstruction of the club landscape to allow for student representation to the board. And we also talked a bit about some training opportunities for staff, and no action on the agenda for tonight.
Thank you. That concludes the committee reports. Do we have any additional board business from any of the board members? Nope. Okay, so we'll move into the second residence forum, which is for general comments. Can I get a show of hands as to how many folks intend to speak tonight? Okay, so, oh, more. Okay, more are popping up. Okay, so, I'm going to recommend to the board that we reduce our time from five minutes to three minutes so we can get everybody to speak. I'm also going to recommend that we take the half hour from the first residence forum where no one spoke so that we'll have an hour to allow everybody here to speak tonight but for three minutes. I want to just take this moment and remind everybody about the public comment period. We believe it's crucial to hear from the community about everybody's concerns and issues. The board's here to listen. This is not, however, a discussion or a Q and A with the board. Just want to remind everyone of that. Accordingly, the board may not respond to any questions or comments tonight. We will, however, after taking the time to research if necessary, process any comments, have an appropriate staff member get back to you, which is why we always reach out to folks and get their email addresses and contact info. Please also be reminded that under federal and state privacy laws, we cannot address or respond to any questions regarding any school personnel or specific student matters. If you have a matter regarding a specific student or staff member, we ask that you please proceed through the appropriate administrative channel, starting with Dr. Moore or Mr. Brandt. I would also like to also remind the board that you can always reach the Board of Education through our email addresses. It has the same effect as coming to a board meeting and speaking. All of our email addresses are on the board webpage that was beautifully redone by Mrs. Tucker recently on the district website. So, that is another way that you can communicate and give public comment to the board if you're unable to attend. Most importantly, you've heard me say this, I'm going to reiterate it again, we want our board meetings to serve as an example to our students, that members of the community and members of the board can address controversial issues in a civil and respectful manner. I expect that to continue tonight. Please remember that we are all modeling behavior for our kids. In that spirit, I would ask that any speaker please direct their comments to the board, not to the audience, not to another speaker, not to a specific staff member or administrator. As per board policy, any overly lengthy, abusive, obscene, or irrelevant comment will be interrupted by me. Each speaker will be allocated three minutes to speak so that we can get everybody in tonight. As I said, I think the board is in agreement that we will increase our time to 60 minutes since nobody spoke at the initial public comment session for items on the agenda. We have a timer now, so that will go off with one minute remaining so that Dr. Moore and I don't have to keep checking our phones to put the timers on.
I have it set for three minutes, so I'll change it to two.
Yeah, change it to two so everybody has one minute of warning. And I just ask that you be respectful to the next person when your time is up so that we can get everybody to speak tonight. Lastly, please remember when you come up to the mic to state your name and address so that we have a record, and hopefully there's a piece of paper up there where you could write down your name and address as well. So, with that, if there's anybody interested in speaking tonight, please come on up to the mic and form a line. It is now 8:43, so our public comment session will go through 9:43 if necessary.
My name is Amelia Miller. I'm from Raritan Township. I have a few. I was wondering if I might hand out something very data-related, in line with what we were speaking about earlier. I have a few copies, so I'm hoping you might feel the share. And I sent an email actually to all of you earlier, so this is a quick condensed follow-up so that I could also share with the community. So, as I previously stated, my name is Amelia Miller. I am one of seven children, five of which of which have graduated from Hunter and Central, two of which are currently students. I'm speaking today on behalf of my parents and my brother Luke Miller. He is in the 12-plus Achieve program, and for those that are not familiar with this program, it focuses on workplace readiness for the special education community for a successful transition out of high school. Because of the significant learning and progress losses among the special education community, Governor Murphy passed Bill S. 3434 in June of 2021, which grants additional special education services to students aging out of the program and is paid for by the federal government. In short, Luke could potentially get another year of school. Luke experienced a significant loss of learning and loss of progress because of COVID, as seen in the graph and table shared. Comprehensive details can be found in the previously referenced email. But in quick summary, especially for those that can't see the visualizations, data from Luke's IP progress reports provided by the school indicate a progress rate of 67% in the year before COVID. In the very next year, the first year of COVID, that dropped to 9%. The following year, 12%, still impacted by COVID. This past year, not so impacted by COVID, that went back up to 43%. We also reviewed the IP comments from his teachers. Luke's teachers highlighted three key skills needing additional improvement in his latest IP: money handling, communication, and problem solving. All of these skills are pivotal to Luke's ability to successfully transition out of high school. Because of COVID, Luke lost out on significant learning opportunities in the classroom and community to practice these skills. My parents have spoken with the Special Education Department several times related to this and have shared our analysis. More comprehensive details related to these conversations can be found in the email. The condensed version is that the Special Department and their lawyer continue to say that Luke does not need an additional schooling for reasons that at times make little to no sense and don't match our quantitative analysis, which was shared with the school, while providing few to no concrete details to back up their statements. We know the great benefit that an additional year would be for Luke, and we continue to not understand why the school appears to be so set on not allowing to Luke to attend next year. Finally, I want to take a moment to emphasize that Luke's teachers are fantastic. We would not be continuing to advocate for another year for Luke if we did not believe in his teachers' abilities to help him progress where he should be had COVID not occurred. I'm aware that there are progresses at play here, and my parents are also working on those. But I'm also a believer in the power of community and collaboration, and so I'm hoping that there are individuals on the board and/or in the audience that would be willing to engage with us so we might work together with Luke's best interests in mind. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Miller. Before the next speaker speaks, I'm going to sort of undo my request about the one-minute warning. I think it might be a little too disruptive to the speakers when they're just into a two-minute, so--
Three minutes.
We're just going to do three minutes flat. Once the alarm goes off, I would just ask the speakers to be cognizant of that and wrap up, please.
Pretty harsh alarm.
It is a harsh alarm, and at two minutes when they're just getting into it, it's a little, a little dramatic, so.
Good evening. Melissa Gardner, Flemington. This evening's theme is common sense. Hunter and Central approved the drag queen show, and however innocent they portray it, many community members are simply not okay with it. They allowed professional drag queen Phoebe Mantrap to attend. Was he paid using our tax dollars? Was he there to offer tips? It was private invite only because the truth is, the administration knew deep down it was wrong, yet they did it anyway, putting these children in the middle. I am happy these children have a place to go where they can connect and make friends. We all want that for our children. In February 2021, staff expressed their confusion, resentment, and frustration following training they were mandated to attend. The facilitator, Natalie Edmund, asserted her claim that all white staff were inherently racist and engaged in actions consistent with white supremacy. There is a name for being judged solely by the color of your skin. It's called racist, and it's evil in every form. When referring to law enforcement, she stated, "It's not that there are bad apples, it's that the whole orchard is bad. This is beyond offensive. Many of us in this community have brave law enforcement officers in our family who put their lives on the line every day to protect us. I am the proud daughter of a man who retired as a Woodbridge, New Jersey police officer and served in the Air Force. He was a proud American who taught me through his actions what it meant to be a proud American." They will claim there is no CRT in the school. This training is literally proof of that. The community should also know, the school provides pedophilia and pornographic books in the library. One book, for example, is Lawn Boy by Jonathan Everson. I'll read just a couple sentences and ask, since it's a school-approved book, that I not be interrupted. "I was 10 years old," but it's true. "I put Doug Goble's dick in my mouth. The real estate guy? Yeah." Nick looked around frantically. "What the fuck are you talking about, Michael? I was in fourth grade. It was no big deal." Cringing, Nick held his hands out in front of him in a yawn gesture. "Stop. He sucked mine, too." People love to use the narrative that concerned parents are in favor of banning books when these filthy books are paid for with our tax dollars. Yes, we get to have a say. Someone wants their children to read this filth? Buy it off Amazon. At the core, this is about the direction of our society. Dr. Moore and this board are responsible for educating these innocent children, yet they hide behind the children, using them as a shield so they can push their radical, progressive political ideology. There are gay and trans organizations who are also not okay with any of this. Gays and Trans Against Groomers are a coalition of gay and trans people who oppose the recent trend of indoctrinating and sexualizing children and teens. I applaud them because you know what they have that so many do not: common sense. Thank you.
Anybody holding sign in the back, can you just please keep them at a lower level so they don't get in the way of our camera? Thank you.
I'm Alexander Rep. I live in Tewksbury, but I teach here at Central. As a film studies teacher, I kind of approach problems from an analytical point of view, breaking things down. And I've been thinking a lot about anonymity, and the fact that we've got a group of staff who have been anonymous, starting with their complaints about the so-called critical race theory, going into their divulging sensitive information to hate groups on Twitter and TikTok that resulted in terroristic threats, death threats of my colleagues, and harassment of my students, my children, the kids I try to keep safe. And it made me think about anonymity. People who go anonymous, they always think they're a superhero on some level, you know, like Spider-Man. But the problem is Spider-Man is an identity. Spider-Man's out there in, like, red and blue. He's also not real. That also helps. And it also helps that he doesn't make terroristic threats. He doesn't kill anyone. When I think about real anonymity and its consequences, I think about groups that also show up in films and documentaries. I think about the KKK, right? They work from anonymity to protect themselves, as they do, in fact, advance an agenda of hate and terrorism, an agenda that has a body count and a terror that comes from not knowing who they are. They could be the guy next to you in the grocery store. They could be, and they have been, not to disparage police officers in general, but they have been, judges, lawyers, doctors even, teachers. And when you have an anonymous group of staff who go outside the lines, the proper protocol, coming here, saying, talking, putting your name to your beliefs, it's called not being a coward, when you have people go outside those lines like that and hide under a cloak of anonymity, now for the students, especially when it's to turn them over to a terroristic online hate group, now they're the ones wondering, is that my bus driver? Is that the security who's supposed to keep me safe and provide entry to the building or not? Is that the custodial staff? Is it my teacher? Is it my nurse who's trusted with my health? That is what these staff have done with their anonymity. They can think they're superheroes all they want, but they act a lot like they're taking their playbook in terms of the damage it causes from the KKK, that terror of anonymity. I had students, and I think it's very important, because I do hear some scoffing at this, it's not hyperbole. I had students who wanted to come here tonight of the LGBTQ+ community. They're not here because they're afraid. They're afraid to be in this room. They're afraid to be around, they're afraid to be in school even, all right? That makes me so, I don't have a word for it. I do not have a word for it, and I know my time is up, but here is the deal. I can't speak for those students, but I told them I'd be here for them. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rep.
Hi, my name is Meg Donhauser. I'm a resident of Flemington Borough, an English teacher here at Central, and the recording secretary for the Hunter and Central Education Association. As an elected officer of the HCA, I'd like to read a statement on behalf of the membership. The Hunter and Central Education Association deeply values our colleagues, students, and families, and we are grateful for the diversity of our school community. We understand that we each come from different walks of life, and we respect any individual's right to hold independent opinions on a variety of topics. However, as public school educators and school employees, we are charged with working with all students regardless of race, ethnicity, gender, and have a duty and charge to strive for a better and more just world where each child feels safe and has an opportunity to thrive. The HCEA recognizes the magnitude of our collective responsibility to help educate both the hearts and minds of our children, and does not condone discrimination or hate in any form, and we will support those within our school community who recognize their role to do the same. The anonymous letters shared in the community do not speak for the HCEA. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Donhauser.
Good evening. My name is Jim Vargas. I'm from over at St. Magdalen's Parish. There's a lot of good--
Could you please state your residency for the record?
Raritan Township.
Thank you.
There's a lot of good things said here tonight, watching the students, things go on, but one of the things I learned, I was in, on vacation in Europe. I was in Romania, Hungary, and over there, you will see people with 1,000-year-old Roman ruins, the Ottoman Empire, their time as an Iraqi, the Times Journal War I, and Rola II communists. And what they do is they go back and they look at it, and they really examine it and plan for the future. In Princeton, John Witherspoon was the sixth president. He also participated in the Declaration of Independence. His stature was being removed because he owned slaves. He did many good things. That was part of his problem. And when he answers, when they said they wanted to remove, they said, "Well, the good he did will still be there. We just don't have to see him." That's indoctrination. The other part is education, and we see a lot of indoctrination here. One of the things that we're talking about tonight, that there was occasion a couple months ago of violence towards one of your students, and you tried to address it the best you could. But that is done in, throughout the educational system, that gets not allowed, but it gets somehow understood. And what I mean by that is, when the issue of George Floyd happened, he was hit and oppressed. People wanted, people took time out to look at his nine minutes, and actually, he's had silence for him. But at the same time, there's a woman by the name Amy Caprio, she's a policeman in Baltimore, who tried to stop a home invasion. She was run over and dragged two blocks, slayed there in pain for six minutes and then died. But nobody knows about Amy Caprio. And during the issues that were going on around George Floyd, Jessica Doty Whitaker was just a 20-year-old single mom who said, you know, "All lives matter," and there was an altercation, and she was killed, and nobody talks about her. You guys got to be fair in how you do these things out. It's got to be a balance that comes into. The recent issue around the drag queen contest, people got to get together, and people got to feel safe, but the selection of a drag queen, it's theater. I mean, if you ever seen the thing called The Gilded Cage or something like that, it was a really funny movie, but it's not theater to some people. It's actually being used to indoctrinate people to accept that, and it's a firebrand. It should have been avoided. Next day, too, what we saw is, where there's an issue during a soccer game, people were told the next day because they thought it was maybe racial not to attend, they couldn't do it. But the judgment was before anything was found to be guilty. I mean, it's kind of crazy. It's, what I'm seeing here, my observation, I haven't been there for like six months, I was stopping back in these places. Some people are innocent until proven guilty, some people are guilty until proven innocent. It really is up to the board. I heard these teachers talk about including the parents. They're doing a great job, but the state is not including the parents, and neither is in things that are coming on. Those things got to change. Thank you for your time.
Originally, I wanted to address the board about the drag show. However, I'm afraid we have an even bigger problem on our hands. When Superintendent Moore said, quote, "He is too weary to answer opposing viewpoints," he's telling us unless we agree with him, he will not address our concerns. No dissenting viewpoints allowed. One of his responses to a parent, quote, "I have nothing more to share with you about the event except to urge you to realize that the undue attention is creating alarm and stress among the children who are seeing that attention as opportunistic and agenda-driven," which is funny because Moore's the one that said, "We accused him of being agenda-driven." Moore also stated, and equally alarming, that we are causing a lack of belonging and a lack of belonging kills. Are you aware that the NIH website notes that 70% of adolescents experience loneliness and not belonging, and it's most prevalent during adolescence? High school has always been the most challenging time for kids, not just some kids, but most kids. Mrs. Hughes, back in May during the riot fiasco, you conceded that the board and administration could have done a better job communicating with the parents. Do you remember that? Well, lesson not learned, because here we are again. And once again, all you have to do was proactively answer the questions and provide assurances, and you would have avoided the uproar. But instead, you do what you always do and try to make it about the opposing viewpoint. Moore says we demonstrate reckless nastiness, cowardice, intolerance, and bias. These are baseless accusations, and what he's actually doing is only describing himself. It's called projection, and he hides behind it. We have over 2,500 students in this school, and to expect all parents and community to align with his way of thinking is illogical. It's a dereliction of duty by not addressing other viewpoints. Mrs. Hughes, this falls squarely on you and the board. What are you going to do about it? You now have a superintendent who just told us that he will not interact with a large portion of the parents and community. Once again, you're allowing it to happen. Mr. Mack was here 20 seconds into his comments, and you gave him a warning, but allow Moore and others to make outrageous and baseless accusations. This is the reason why three new board members overwhelmingly were voted in, and it will happen again because you refuse to hear what we are really saying. We are just concerned parents and community members looking to you for answers. That's it. Will you answer these questions and put an end to this? What happened during the drag show? Was there an outside drag queen who attended? If so, were they hired, or did they volunteer their services? What was their role? Were they vetted as someone appropriate to interact with the kids? Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Dr. Joy Herzog. I'm a nurse practitioner. I'm a resident of Raritan Township, and I'm the very proud stepmom of two graduates of Hunter and Central High School. My kids got a wonderful education here. They've gone on to finish college, finish college. My stepdaughter has a master's degree. They're working. They have families. They're serving in their community. They're wonderful kids. And I want to say thank you. Thank you to you, Dr. Moore, personally and directly. I want to thank the board for your service, your commitment, your dedication. I want to thank the teachers at Hunter and Central for all of the work that they do, the ancillary educators, the administrators, and to thank the students. What a celebration tonight has been. What a celebration tonight has been to see club after club, educator after educator, faculty member after faculty member, bursting with pride, talking about their students and their achievements. And to see the kids, it was so delightful, giggling and bumping up against each other and feeling kind of shy, and the little girl in the corner, and all of them together, really having this experience of achieving, finding their niche, finding both academic excellence, athletic excellence, excellence in their talents through the arts, through debate, finding the areas within this wonderful, diverse, large, inclusive, big tent community that all of you, and by you, I mean you as the board, Dr. Moore as the leader, the board members as such skillful support, the teachers, the educators, the ancillary staff, all of you come together as a community to take care of our kids and give them a start in life. These are really hard times. I've been alive a long time. It's such a privilege. And I honestly can't remember a time in my life that has been as challenging and painful as the era that we're living in. I'm here in another role as well. I'm a big sister. I'm a big sister to a proud, out gay man who graduated from high school, if I can, where is the math teacher? I'm going to embarrass myself. If I can do the math right. He graduated from high school in 1982. And at the time that my brother was in high school, there was no gay pride. There was no acknowledgement of his sexuality. There were no clubs to include him. He barely made it. He barely made it. But he did make it. He's one of the people that survived. He went on to have the wonderful life that he lives today. He's an advocate. He's a servant. He's a brother. He's a friend. I'm so grateful he's alive. Thanks for all you're doing to protect our kids. Thank you.
All right, my turn. Give me a moment. All right. Testing. Is it on? All right. I'm Vera. I'm from Hybridge. And I would like to, when it comes to the matter of the drag show, I like to not beat around the bush. And I want to address something that I know, and I think you guys know. At the end of the day, it's not about the people who are complaining about the drag show. They don't actually care about the drag show. It's a matter of control. They believe that children are their property, to control, to dictate, and to mold as they see fit. And if they do not turn out the way they want, they are to not be. In turn, plenty of the other students have addressed the drag show in depth, but I don't think they get to the simple root that, at the end of the day, it's about the fact that the so-called anti-drag people, at the end of the day, just believe that the students and the children are their property. It's been addressed that what they are doing, and this attack, will lead, and will lead to children dying, and that is what they desire. It is nothing more than an affront for, for control and for infringing on the autonomy of the students to be their own people. However, there is some good news. And I think that those who have spoken out against the drag show know this, that they are outnumbered. They are in the minority and that they--
Brad, can you please address the board?
Okay.
Thank you.
Well, I think, well, it's not so short. Their time is ending, and I think they know it, and we probably all know it. And I guess now it's just a matter of, where do you, where does the board lie? I know you cannot provide an answer for this, so it's merely rhetorical question. Are the students citizens to control their own destinies? Or are they the property of their parents? And I will allow you, and well, I guess it's time for you to weigh in on that question. And we will be watching your actions to see where you stand on that.
Thank you.
Hi.
Hi.
My name is Jeremy Sylvia-- Hello? Yeah, I'll sign it. Give me a sec. All right. Hi, my name is Jeremy Sylvia Sincaglia. I am from Edison. I drove an hour to be here. I don't have a big speech or anything. I just want to say that I hope you let the students go ahead with their drag show. It's not indoctrination, indoctrination, or grooming, or anything like that. It's just a fun time. And yeah, I just hope you let them have that fun time and stuff. All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, hello. Good evening. My name is Greg Hodges. I live at Hybridge. And like a lot of people here, I'm here speaking in support of a number of the student body members. And my hope was to share the fact that I've had some concerns about some of the comments that have been made, and in particular, the demonstration of a lack of basic medical literacy. I am a healthcare worker. I work at the Atlantic Health System. And to the board, I wanted to share with you guys, I think you guys may be aware of this, but there was an official position statement by the American Medical Association on the medical spectrum of gender. This statement was made in April of last year by Dr. James Mandara to Bill McBride, the executive director of the National Governors Association. And I want to share some bits of that for your information. And it reads, "Empirical evidence has demonstrated that trans and non-binary gender identities are normal variations of human identity and expression. For gender-diverse individuals, standards of care and accepted medically necessary services that affirm gender or treat gender dysphoria may include mental health counseling, non-medical social transition, gender-affirming hormone therapy, and/or gender-affirming surgeries. Clinical guidelines established by professional medical associations or organizations for the care of minors promote these supportive interventions based on the current evidence that enables young people to explore and live the gender that they choose. Every major medical association in the United States recognizes the medical necessity of transition-related care for improving the physical and mental health of transgender people." It goes on. "In addition, evidence has demonstrated that foregoing gender-affirming care can have tragic consequences. Transgender individuals are up to three times more likely than the general population to report to be diagnosed with mental health disorders, with as many as 41.5% reporting at least one diagnosis of a mental health or substance use disorder. The increasing prevalence of these medical health conditions is widely thought to be a consequence of minority stress, the chronic stress from coping with societal stigma and discrimination because of one's gender identity and expression. Because of this stress, transgender minors also face a significantly heightened risk of suicide. Transgender children, like all children, have the best chance to thrive when they are supported and can obtain the health care they need. Studies suggest that improved body satisfaction and self-esteem following the receipt of gender-affirming care is protective against poor mental health and supports healthy relationships with parents and peers. Studies also demonstrate dramatic reductions in suicide attempts, as well as decreased rates of depression and anxiety. Other studies show that a majority of patients report improved mental health and function at receipt of gender-affirming care." So basically, in short, on behalf of the medical community, please, if the kids want to have their drag show, please let them have it. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Hodges.
I need my reading glasses. Good evening. My name is Rocky Schwartz, and I'm a resident in Clinton Township. My sons graduated, one 10 years ago, one 12 years ago, and I never went to a Board of Ed meeting. But now, I feel compelled to show up and represent those kids that don't feel safe to come tonight. I saw what happened last month. And I also don't want to forget how amazing it was, how this meeting started, because these kids are amazing, and I saw it last month. These kids are so articulate and so graceful and bright and brave. What one young woman said last month really stuck with me. "Why don't you all just leave us alone?" And I haven't seen any other kids come here and complain about this. What I saw last month were adults shaming students. And I want to applaud Dr. Moore and the board for allowing that club to be one of the Hundred Clubs. I mean, it's just a club. And it is important for people to feel like they have a place where they can be with like-minded people. It's very emotional for me. My cousin Eddie, who was my best friend, was gay. I say was because he's not here on this earth anymore. He was shunned by my family. His father was my uncle. And I'm only going to say it this way because I think people really, really don't understand that he was found in his closet hanging with the chair knocked over. And my other cousin found him. He was shunned by his own family. These kids do not deserve the way some of these other adults are treating them. And I will continue to show up for them. Thank you.
Hey, can you guys hear me? Sorry, I'm short.
Yes. I feel your pain.
My name is Rae. They/them. I am a student, a senior, from Reddington Township. And first of all, I want to really touch on the point that the previous speaker made, which I thought was very accurate, that I have not seen a single student at this board meeting, at any other board meetings that I've been to, I haven't been to them all. They're really late, and I have homework. But I have not seen a single student or staff member, to be fair, who has come and spread the hateful rhetoric that some people are spreading at this meeting tonight. I will also say that I am proudly transgender and non-binary. And I have been out since freshman year, since after COVID happened. And I came out during COVID, during that initial period of 2019, when everything, or 2020, sorry, when everything was closed down because I was like, oh, nobody's seen me anymore. I can just do whatever I want, and I don't have to be scared. Because the truth is that I was scared to come out, and I was scared to even acknowledge my own identity because I didn't know what people would think. And there's not enough resources out there to actually help people figure out their identity. And that's why it took me so long, and it's taken my friends so long, to not only discover themselves, to push past, past the stereotypes and the discrimination that prevent us from acknowledging our true identities sooner, and then also to push past the discrimination that prevents us from sharing our true identities. To those of you who have come here tonight, and I know this is not addressing the board, but if you've come here tonight to hate on students who are just trying to express themselves and shame on you, board member or not, and to specifically address the board, I have heard a lot of talk, specifically talk that has been good about changes that we need to make at the school and things that we need to do better, but I have not seen a lot of action. And the reality is that for students at school like me, who are openly trans and who need accommodations and who need inclusive measures, they're not present. We don't have gender-neutral bathrooms everywhere on campus. We have one right there in the very corner of the 700s that if any of you know this school at all, if any of you are actually students or staff, you will know that it's really inaccessible. And there's one in the, what is it, 100th math hallway that's also really inaccessible. And in conducting interviews with other trans people for my journalism class, I learned that most of these kids don't even know they exist because the knowledge is not publicly out there, and it's not accessible to them. And we should not have to walk 10 minutes from a class or be in the band building or the IMC where there's no gender-neutral bathrooms there anyways. We should not have to do that just to go to the bathroom. And so we either end up holding our pee, which is annoying, or we end up using the binary bathrooms and feeling incredibly uncomfortable. There are no gender-neutral locker rooms at our school. I have to, I sit in the gym for 20 minutes in the mornings and don't change. I just wear sweatpants because it's too awkward to go to the nurse's office because there's no gender-neutral locker rooms, and it just singles me out even more. So I won't list all these other things because I'm running out of time. But I will say that the board needs to take action. I'm really sick of all the talk and the lack of action. Students are suffering right now. Students are being attacked. Students are facing discriminatory measures, and they're facing lack of inclusivity in the school environment, and it's not okay. You guys need to take action. Thanks.
Thank you. So before the next speaker speaks, I'm just seeing more people approach the dais. So we're at 9:20. We've got about 20 minutes left. So it looks like there's six folks up there who want to speak. So that will get us to our approximate 9:45 hour of public session.
Seven.
Hi, my name's Elliot Franklin. I live in Delaware Township. There's not a lot that I can add that my amazing young friend Rae just said in their speech and what everyone else said. So I would like to use my time to read out the list of the names of trans people who were murdered in the last year. Royal poetical star Mel Robert Groves, Damian Lopez, Kiva Scatter, Jessie Hart, Jo Acker, Raiki Otumora, Jenny Lee, Jenny DeLeon, Marquesha Lawrence, Danielle Johnson, Angel Nira, Nikki David, Martina Caldera, Zanaya Williams, Kate Yashona Stone, Nikki Torrietta, Amare Le, Duval Princess, Matthew Angelo Spampanato, Naomi Skinner, Cypress Ramos, Paloma Vasquez, Brent Wood, Elise Maleri, Tatiana Labelle, Catherine Newhouse, Kenyatta Webster, My Love Parker, Ariana Mitchell, Fem Feather, Ray Muscat, Sasha Mason, Nedra Sequence Morris, Maddie Hoffman, Brazil Johnson, Shemane Giselle Marie, Kitty Monroe, Cherry Bush, Jasper Aaron Lynch, Jimmy Lee, Martesia Richmond, Toy Davis, Keisha Chanel Geter, Camila Marie Swan, Hayden Davis, Marcela Castro, Kimbella Kimball, A.C. Morrison, DeeDee Ricks, Regina Allen, Serena Brenneman, Paris Rich, Rexy Q., Ruby Taverner, Asher Garcia, Kenna Lee Gillick, Ace Scott-- Kenna Lee Gillick, Ace Scott, Kai Khan, Quinn Maur Guston, Milo Winslow, Destiny Lachey, Amelia Furnas Leonhart, Haley Gabrielle Feldman, Jo Spencer, Teda Laban, L Cho, and many others whose names we do not even know. These are just the people who were murdered in America. The violence is even worse in South America and Mexico. We are just trying to live. I know you are doing a great job. I have been at these board meetings since February. I came here days after having retinal surgery with an eye patch still on, to support my friends and the students here. This is an epidemic, and we need to acknowledge it. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Sandra Gong. I live in Raritan Township. I'm a taxpayer. My kids are in college and graduate school. But now I come to these meetings because I care. And first, I have to apologize to Dr. Moore because I didn't write you a letter after the last meeting. I was going to write you a letter and say, oh, my gosh, you are extraordinary. You're eloquent. I don't know how you do it. Mrs. Hughes, I don't know how you do it. I don't know how you guys don't leap off of the stage at times. So thank you. And thank you to the three who are leaving the Board, to the three who are coming on. They really have big shoes to fill. And I won't threaten like someone had said at the last meeting, but we will watch. We will watch and listen very carefully to see that they contribute to the education of the kids who are here. I always bring you tidbits of New York City. I really am an introvert. I never really want to talk, but when I hear some of the parents come up here and talk, I just say, I cannot sit. I have to talk. So, the Brooklyn Public Library is separate from the New York Public Library. That was actually one of my first jobs when I was growing up in New York. The Brooklyn Public Library did something really fantastic. When all of this book banning started, the Brooklyn Public Library said, you know what? To all the teenagers who are out there, we are giving you access to our entire audiobook and ebook collection for free. So tell that to your kids, for free, in the United States, to every teenager. I also want to read just a paragraph from a letter that was sent to the New York Times. Reading is empowering. No wonder that those who want to tell the rest of us what to do fear libraries and books. Thank you very much. Have a great holiday. Thank you.
Hello. I will fill this out with one eye because I can't see without my reading glasses. Oh, my gosh. I hope you can understand what I'm writing. Okay, Raritan. So, I'm going to start this off with--
Sorry, could you please just state your name and address for the record?
Yeah, that's what I'm going to, I was going to start it off. I'm just going to give you my first name, which addresses the safety issue. So, my name's Christiane. I'm queer. I'm non-binary, and I'm also a graduate of Central, before we had a queer group. I'm only giving my first name because every single day, I live in fear that something's going to happen. It took a lot for me to come here because I'm afraid to say just my whole name because of repercussions, right? Just because of my existence, just because of who I love, and how I represent, or how I identify myself, which is obscene.
Please address the Board, not the audience.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm doing this, which is absolutely just obscene, that any human being has to live their every single day in fear of their own safety, right? So, I'm an adult, and I've been around the block a few times. I've been accosted because of who I am. I lived through my best friend, who was a gay man, being murdered 10 years ago because he was gay. I've lived through a whole bunch of different kinds of forms of prejudice and stuff. And we're subjecting this still to our kids. I graduated from Central nearly 30 years ago. Nearly 30 years. Why are we still talking about this? Why is this still happening? Why are we still having an environment where we even debate this? This is not a debate. Do you know how long it took me to figure out I was non-binary? Up until two years ago. I'm in my 40s. What it would have been like, I had to ask my, my child, my child, my teenager, you know, this is how I feel. This is how I have felt my whole life. I always just said I was androgynous or a tomboy. I always felt weird and wrong. I always felt less than. I had to ask my own child, who thankfully has more of a vocabulary than I do, and she helped me figure out who I was. She helped me figure out that my pronouns are different than what I was assigned at birth. And thank God for that. I have felt free, in a way, these past two years that I didn't before. If I had had a drag show, we used to try, do you know what we did? We went to Rocky Horror. That was our drag show. That's what me and my other queer friends did, right? Because that was the only representation. And it's not indoctrination. Not indoctrination. It is representation. I would have spent the last 30 years accepting myself, loving myself, not thinking about killing myself, not thinking that I was wrong. So, I'm going to end it with this, with some statistics, since I gave you anecdotes, right? I am the representation of silence and non-representation. I have mental health issues. I have a panic disorder, have a lot of different stuff, and it comes from going out into the world every single day and being told you're wrong. And representation changes that. So, I know that just went off, but I just want to put this out there. This is from a statistic from this past year. Forty-two percent of LGBTQI-plus youth has seriously considered and/or attempted suicide this past year. Forty-two percent of us. Twelve, well, that's breaking down the statistics. Ninety-four percent of us have reported that the recent politics and the conversation around our existence negatively affects us. Again, I'm an adult. I've learned to live with this. I've learned to put one foot in front of another. But how about we give the kids that are in the school now, not 30 years of frickin' struggle? So, thank you for what, like, I've heard just tonight. And yeah, action. That young person, what they said, action, please, because it's not a debate.
Thank you.
It's about keeping us alive.
Thank you.
I don't have any prepared remarks, but I'm a musician. I can improvise. But, so I am Alex Heisler. I am from Washington, New Jersey. And I am transgender. I have never attended this school, but I came to represent people. For those who were too afraid to talk, and I'm on the border of that. But I have seriously tried to take my own life several times for feeling that I'm not accepted. And I've been blessed with a lovely, accepting mother, who's right behind me, actually. And still, with that, I felt different, and that I can't be a member of society, that I have to, I can't be who I am. And months of mental health treatment to feel comfortable. And it really started to turn when I started to socially transition and have people think of me for who I am. I don't have much to say. Thank you.
Thank you.
So, I'm Tracy Heisler, in Washington. That is my beautiful daughter, who just made me a little verklempt, so, sorry. The reason I wanted to make some comments, I know that my child is not at this school. They were assigned Warren Hills, and the environment was just not conducive to helping her to thrive. We actually transferred to 100 and Prep here in, in Hunterdon County, which has been a wonderful experience. But what I wanted to share was the understanding that I have gained as a white, middle-class lady who went to church every Sunday and, you know, raised my kids up in my belief systems. Fox News was my homepage for many a year. And then I found that three of my six biological children are LGBTQ. I have two non-binary and one transgender child. And as I've learned about how to support them, all three of those children are also on the autism spectrum. They have Asperger's. So they're highly intelligent individuals. But what you may not know is that in 2020, a study came out that showed that people on the autism spectrum are three times, three times, six times, six times more likely to have gender dysphoria issues. This is not indoctrination. This is not grooming. This is genetics. This is who they are. And we have to love them and to celebrate them for who they are. And that's one of the things that I was thinking about as I saw those dozens and dozens of beautiful children being honored for their accomplishments. Some of those kids are LGBTQ, and they have been able to thrive and succeed because they've been accepted. I work in child welfare. I'm a trainer for the nurtured heart approach, which I saw that you guys utilize. The power of the nurtured heart approach is connection and safety. And when you provide kids with connection and safety, they will thrive and be okay. So if that means having a drag show with their friends where they feel safe and connected, I'm way okay with that. I'll come do your hair and your nails. But on behalf of my three LGBTQ kids, I want to say thank you. My eldest is 35 next week, which is crazy to think about, but she's, they are an engineer at NASA. That's the kind of thing that can come with that love and support. And thank you.
All right. My name's Wayne Fish. I do want to thank the Board for acknowledging all those students at the beginning of the session tonight. It was quite an accomplishment across the Board academically and in sports, and my son happened to be one of them as well. So, I do appreciate you guys acknowledging that.
Mr. Fish, could you just state your residence for the record, please?
East Anvil.
Thank you. And congratulations to your son for being up here tonight.
Thank you. To me, here, there are several issues that we have going on here at 100 and Central, and it seems that the common denominator with all of them comes down to one Mr. Moore. If we reflect back years ago, this school once was a blue-ribbon school of excellence, and now it seems to be the furthest from the truth. As stated before by others, kids and their learning has fallen behind that of other countries dramatically. What we need to do here, in my opinion, is get back to our basics of subjects and teaching, English, math, science, VOTEC, and history, just to name a few. The problem that we are now facing is the direction the school is going under Mr. Moore's poor leadership. He has had a reckless disregard for the safety and well-being of the entire community. Specifically, he has shattered a sense of belonging and acceptance among staff, students, and parents. He demonstrates a willful abandonment of those who do not agree with his ideology. Just recently, last meeting, he said that he would not respond to those emails from parents that didn't agree with him. You put yourself there, so you got to do your job. Reflecting back February 21, he stated mandatory racism, equity, and diversity training with the staff. It sounded good in theory until the staff started watching and listening to the nonsense. As stated before, the facilitator in the video asserted her claim that all white staff were inherently racist. Later in the video, they even started shedding bad light on our local law enforcement, where they were talking about, we're talking about the racism, and I quote, "It's not that there are bad apples. It's the whole orchard is bad." How is this training working to educate our staff on issues of diversity, equity, and inclusivity, and bring greater awareness? I have to tell you that I was shocked when I heard this, and that if I was local in law enforcement, I wouldn't be here at the school that does not back the blue. Some of the teachers expressed concerns in other board meetings, but as everything else here, it fell on deaf ears. It's pretty sad that many of our teachers feel their sense of belonging has been shattered, and that they no longer feel safe to openly express their opinions to Mr. Moore and the administration. In Mr. Moore's rules, quote-unquote "rules", he wants staff to stay engaged and allow and experience discomfort. Well, that speaks Later, a year later, we got to see Mr. Moore's come full circle when he allowed unsanctioned protests to become a mob scene here at the school. By the way, this riot went on for almost an hour and a half with no lockdown code. Once again, no repercussions of Mr. Moore, students involved, and basically no action from our Board of Ed. By the way, it should be known that at the time of the event, administrations were aware from a survey that there was concerns about, related to the campus security.
Mr. Fish, please wrap up, please.
Okay, I'll try to wrap up.
Thank you.
So, now we are another six months ahead, and again, more light from Dr. Moore with his invite-only drag show. Hold on. I'll let you guys all talk.
All right. Mr. Fish, you're beyond your three minutes. I've asked everybody to be respectful of timelines. You have one more speaker, and it's 9:42.
So firstly, I personally don't have any issue with the drag show. I think the way you're getting a lot of this backlash--
Okay, thank you. Okay, guys, guys, we've done really well so far. Let's please remain respectful for our last two speakers. Mr. Fish, please, I'm going to have to cut you off. We're at our 60-minute limit.
So, I have no issue with persons who choose to be gay or trans. I have family members. I have family members that are gay. So, again, I think the issue was, it got compounded because of the fluke we're on with the soccer beat. On the day of the soccer--
Thank you, Mr. Fish. Thank you. Thank you for your time.
Okay, is this on? Okay. I'm nervous. Good evening. My name is Karen Hart. I am from Delaware Township. I have two children in 100 and Central. Thank you for allowing me to speak tonight. And for the record, I trust that my words will have no negative repercussions on my children. The Cambridge Dictionary defines belonging as a feeling of being happy or comfortable as part of a particular group and having a good relationship with other members of the group because they welcome you and accept you. That word is very commonly used by the leaders of this school. It is very hard to associate this word with our administration and school system when there are petitions circulating within our community on both sides of the debate about continuing to employ the superintendent. There are events, such as a private invitation-only drag show, that are permitted, which exclude others. others. There are chaotic events such as the Roe v. Wade protest, which created an unsafe environment for our students. These examples do not exemplify belonging. The superintendent continuously attempts to shift his blame onto others by painting those who do not believe in his ideology as a racist, bigots, or homophobic. The school board and the superintendent may speak of belonging, but their actions, what they allow to occur, and their reactionary responses to these events prove that they are not fostering a unified environment where all can happily belong. Our students are divided. Our staff is divided. Our parents are divided. Our community is divided. This is not belonging. Hundred and Central was last listed as a blue-ribbon school in 2001. That was over 20 years ago. Now, our school can be found on Twitter, national news channels, and Instagram. This publicity is definitely not positive in nature, and it is tarnishing the wonderful, elevated reputation that Central once had. There are children and staff who are embarrassed to be associated with this school. How do we overcome this negative reputation and return to our previous reputation of providing a blue-ribbon educational environment for our children, who are our future? How do we trust in the board to provide this for them? We are their voices, and I plead to the community at large, to the people listening at home, to speak up and let your voice be heard. Attend a meeting, write a letter, send an email, submit an Oprah request, but do not bury your head in the sand and allow this environment to survive. Cast your votes and lead... help lead this community back to where it belongs. The board is in charge of the superintendent, not the other way around. I plead that the board members answer for all of these events, be accountable for them, and provide the community with assurance and confidence that a unified educational environment is their priority. Thank you for listening.
Thank you, Ms. Hart. With that, we'll conclude public comment. Oh, we have one more speaker? Okay, we'll fit in one more speaker. Last one.
Hi, my name is Wendy Byer, and I have a child that recently graduated, and I have a 10th grade who have done phenomenally well in this school. It's a huge, beautiful school, but I'm really here to say that I want to thank the board and Dr. Moore for just creating a wonderful, wonderful experience for both of my children. The one that is currently here was one of the kids that also was applauded today, although he didn't come to the meeting, and my daughter has been very... Sorry. Successfully done extremely well in college based on the education and all of the experiences she had. There are two petitions running around, but I'd like to just say a couple from one of the ones that has almost 2,000 signatures from people that live in the vicinity.
Mrs. Byer, could you please just make sure you address the board?
Sorry. Dr. Moore is a remarkable superintendent at Hundred and Central High School. He has proven to be a leader in helping to ensure an education... an educational community that is inclusive and equitable for all students. He has worked diligently to protect students against hate. He has stood up against hateful groups and those that have targeted Hundred and Central time and time again. From books to clubs, he stands up for students. When students feel safe and protected to be who they are at school, every group of students performs academically better. Dr. Moore has created an equitable and inclusive environment for the LGBTQIA-plus students. Every student succeeds. Dr. Moore's staff had presented the Central's student scores well above average on the NGGPA, and we also had a beautiful presentation of how well the school is doing currently. Thanks to Dr. Moore, our students are safe to be who they are. Our students advocated for themselves in front of a crowd, riled room of adults, and I'm in awe of these young people. Their eloquence and bravery is evidence of not only great education, but also the direct result of leadership that tirelessly fights for them and supports them for who they are. Dr. Moore truly has the best interest of our students at heart with everything he does. He is quite literally saving lives by protecting safe spaces for young people at school. To me, he's a hero. As a district school, a community, we are beyond fortunate to have Dr. Moore as our superintendent. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Byer. And congratulations to you as well, Mrs. Byer, for having your son acknowledged tonight. So, with that, we'll conclude public comment. We'll move on to board comments. If any board member have any comments, there's just one thing that I would like to say in response to one of the speakers. Oops, sorry. Am I cut off? There will never be, from the board's perspective, repercussions to anyone speaking at a public board meeting, whether that be staff, students, parents. I can assure you on behalf of the board that everyone is free to speak... come here and speak openly, and there will not be repercussions for that. So, any concerns about that should be dismissed, and I can be emailed directly if there are concerns about it. Does anyone else have board comments?
I do. This is my swan song, so I just wanted to say a few things about my experience here on the board. The last six years have been very enjoyable in working with my fellow board members, and one of the things about my fellow board members that I've noticed is that none of them seem to come to the meetings with a particular ax to grind or an agenda to push, and I hope this continues moving forward. As of January, ironically, there will be no educators on the Board of Education. As my long...
Excuse me, folks. Could you give... Could you give the... Thank you. Could you give Mr. Ashard your attention or step out? Thank you.
As my longtime friend and colleague in science education, Dr. Jeff Charney likes to say, between the two of us, we have about a century's worth of experience in education, something that we felt was of great benefit to the Hundred and Central community. However, all of the experience in the world could not anticipate the arrival of the culture wars in public education. Some have said we should stick to the basics, teach only core subjects, and not waste time on, for example, social and emotional learning. But it's clear from the work of great thinkers like Abraham Maslow and John Dewey, who is considered the father of public education in America, that kids struggle to learn if they don't feel safe, that without meeting an individual's physiological needs, that without a sense of safety, love, belonging, and self-esteem, they rarely live up to their potential as individuals, that language arts, math, and science matter little to a student who feels threatened, who does not feel wanted or loved, and whose self-esteem is precarious. In 2017, a former teacher, not from here, but from Michigan, I believe, named Carla Shalaby wrote a book called Troublemakers: Lessons in Freedom from Young Children at School. I'd like to quote her. She said, "Human beings feel safe when they know their personhood will not be assaulted by way of marginalization, public humiliation, and rejection. They feel safe when they are accepted, embraced, cherished, even when they mess up. This is the task of education, and it falls on our shoulders as teachers." And I would venture to say it's not just teachers, but administrators and board members as well. Shalaby continues, "We need schools in which children and adults are teaching one another the skills that a free world will require, how to listen, how to speak in our own languages and in one another's languages, how to read broadly defined, how to heal and be healed, how to use numbers to understand problems and measure our own solutions, and most importantly, how to be a model of love." Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ashard. Do we have any additional board comments? With that, we'll conclude our meeting, move into an executive session to discuss HIBs, school security, and that's it. There will be no action upon our return. Happy holidays, everyone. Have a great winter break. Happy New Year. We'll see you in the new year.
Move second.
Oh, do we have a motion?
I move it.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.